Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order of the Bellingham City Council for June 9th, The Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. Teri Borneman.
Here.
Jean Knudsen. Kathy Lehman.
Here.
Michael Lillquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Jack Weiss.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start out with our 15-minute public comment period this evening. Is my mic reverberating, or is it just me? Just me? Oh, good.
Your mic's echoing.
You're echoing.
Okay, I'll keep talking until it sounds okay. That's a joke in there somewhere. Okay, that sounds better. We're going to start with our 15-minute public comment period. Just a note, if you have comments on the Alabama corridor, there's been some question whether or not they should go in the public hearing portion of the evening with the transportation plan, improvement plan, or under public comment, and I'm going to say it was error on the public comment side. So if you have comments on the Alabama corridor, or, sorry, the C-curb, that kind of stuff, public comment, please. So, we've got a couple of folks signed up here. I'm going to call your name. When you come up to the microphone, you have three minutes to speak on any topic you would like in front of council. And please introduce yourself for the record before you begin speaking. And we'll start with Judy Collins, Dick Conneboy, and Betsy Pernato. Feel free to make a line at the door down the hallway. Hi Judy.
Hi. I'm Judy Collins, and I'm back again because I still need water on my property on the Horton Road. And everyone else on the Horton Road has city water but me. I seem to be in no man's land. The water goes right by my driveway, but I don't have any water. The city limits is at my fence, so I'm not, and I'm not in the urban growth, so I'm kind of stuck. I can't get water from Deer Creek, it's too far away. I've tried that. You can't dig wells because there's no water. The guys just down the street from me drilled two wells, and there's no water on the Horton Road. And we really like our property on the Horton Road, but water would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you Judy. Next is Dick Conneboy.
Hi, Dick Conneboy, South 46th Street here in Bellingham. There were some comments made during the planning committee session this morning that deserve a reply, since they are not reflective of the reality of the situation with rentals. These statements were made by our at-large representative Roxanne Murphy, who indicated very forcefully to those present that she had met with the BIA and the real estate reps on this rental safety and health measure, and with the students, and that she would not support the current ordinance options being discussed. Her conclusions were that a stronger enforcement of existing laws in education, that is, our complaint-driven system, would be sufficient to correct the serious problems in rentals, which she estimated to be in the order of about 5% of the units. Unfortunately, we already know that the city of Pasco, Washington, found that 15% of the units inspected under their program had serious life safety issues. 10% had mold problems. A full 85% of Pasco units had problems of varying degrees. The city of Gresham, Oregon, performed over 1,600 inspections in 2009, and issued as a result over 4,000 citations for serious issues. Lexington, Kentucky, performed a random inspection of units near the University of Kentucky, and found that 50% had life safety issues. Sacramento, California, began a program during which 1/3 of the units inspected had serious safety and health issues. The question then is why we would believe that the condition of rental housing here in Bellingham does not mirror that which is found in other cities, ones that have statistics to show that the condition of rentals in our cities is extremely problematic, and not at the level of 5%. I would also like to point out that students represent approximately 25% of the tens of thousands of renters, and that efforts to reach the other 75% will be difficult, if not impossible. The threat of retaliation for those who report violations is real and substantial. This has been amply reported by two student surveys in recent years, and my many meetings with student renters and leaders over the past several years. I will again furnish the council copies of this information by email if necessary. I can also provide yet again a copy of the Center for Disease Control Study on complaint-driven systems that concluded that these systems do not work. I have personally been working on the rental health and safety issue for 10 years. Jean knows all about that. I have met with all but one of every sitting member of this council on rental health and safety, the exception being our at-large member. And I would like to publicly offer tonight to meet with Roxanne for 20, 30 minutes, similar to that accorded to the building industry and the realtors. Thank you very much.
Thank you Dick. Betsy Pernato, followed by Joanne, and then Kendra Thomas.
Does that mean we put our seatbelts on?
Okay. Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Betsy Pernato, and I live on Alderwood Avenue in Bellingham. And I'm also going to speak on registration and inspection of rental units in Bellingham. The city can take a lesson from Watcom County as it considers an ordinance for registration and inspection of rental housing. In 2008, the county enacted tougher rules to comply with state law aimed at curbing sewage pollution. The rules were imposed on all county homeowners with septic systems. In 2010, after loud complaints from homeowners, the county council voted to relax the enforcement of the inspections for most of Watcom County. Homeowners receive a postcard informing them about the legal inspection requirement, but there is no enforcement if they ignore the postcard. The only exceptions are the Lake Watcom and Drayton Harbor watersheds, where homeowners are given deadlines for getting inspections, and face a civil penalty of $500 if they ignore written warnings. Around the lake and Drayton Harbor, the deadlines and fines have helped to motivate most homeowners to comply with the law. About 95% of the septic systems around the lake, and 82% around Drayton Harbor, are inspected, according to a 2012 report in the Bellingham Herald. But in areas where homeowners received only a postcard, the compliance rate was 22%, down from 66% in 2010. Registration and inspection of rental units is every bit as much a public health issue as our septic inspections. Vacancy rates are low in Bellingham, and the power lies with landlords. Renters are afraid to complain about unsafe housing unless they are evicted or their rents are raised. You, city council members, have a responsibility to protect the public by doing everything in your power to assure that rental housing is safe and secure. I urge you to pass an ordinance that requires the registration of all rental units, and the inspection of enough units to ensure that we, community members, are safe in these rental units, and do not have to rely simply on buyer beware or yo-yo. You're on your own. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Joanne Carver, maybe?
Cowan.
Cowan?
Okay. Hi. My name is Joanne Cowan, and I'm here to read a minute, which is a statement from the Bellingham Meeting of Friends, which is the Quaker meeting in town. Our address is 1701 Ellis. Is that enough address?
That's fine.
Okay, it's fine.
Thank you.
So, "The Bellingham Meeting of the Religious Society of Friends, Quakers, holds that safe and healthy living conditions are a basic human right. We share a concern that many low-income families and individuals in our community live in unhealthy or unsafe rental housing. Recognizing the reticence of those living below or near the property line to initiate interactions with landlords through secret dress for housing problems outside their control, we urge the city of Bellingham to enact a rental registration program that includes regular, proactive inspections of all rental housing, to assure that all housing offered to rent in our community will be in compliance with minimal health and safety codes." Quakers, we're concerned about people in our community. We're concerned about community. And we know some housing is not safe for some people, and there's difficulty in getting response to that. We are happy that the city is considering trying to assure that they have a way to live safely and with health. And this is a minute that we passed our business meeting yesterday. This is what Quakes do. We make minutes, we make statements, get arrested. And I'm not into that right now, but I'm just saying that it is a concern for us, and we, I'm here to speak for all of us, them. So, thanks.
Great, thank you, Joanne. Kendra Thomas, followed by Rick Nicholson and Wendy Harris.
My name is Kendra Thomas. I am an employee of the city of Bellingham, but speaking as a private resident and as the future local liaison of the Associated Students of Western. We are presenting a petition signed by approximately 1,200 students, faculty members, and professors, as well as private residents, in favor of both inspections and registrations. Many people have heard that there is not a high demand for the inspections, and that there is just one for the registration, but this petition, we believe, proves otherwise. Additionally, many landlords have made the argument that any inspection or registration program would only cost tenants more, but multiple studies by both city employees and by previous programs in other cities have proven that there is minimal cost to the tenants themselves, something like $3 a month, depending on what the actual fees are. We believe that you should pass this ordinance.
Thank you Kendra. Linda, do you want this?
Yeah, if you could give that to Linda, that'd be great.
Rick Nicholson, followed by Wendy Harris.
Good evening, council. Rick Nicholson, Service Development Director at WTA. And I don't know if everyone received a copy of an email I sent out this afternoon. I sent it, okay, very good. So I won't read the whole thing. Maybe some didn't. So I will touch on the high points. It's in your inbox tomorrow, probably. Regarding the Alabama corridor. As you know, our highest ridership route, Route 331, it's really our, kind of our pride and joy in the transit system of our goal lines, our high-frequency corridors. It serves the Alabama corridor that's been in question here for a while, for the safety improvement program. And we've been involved with city staff in looking at the different options, and being involved from the beginning, which has been very much appreciated. One of the things we are naturally very sensitive to is running time for this route. This is our highest ridership route in the system. 700,000 people a year are riding this one route. That's about 1/7 of all of our riders are on this one route. Right now, the route is averaging arriving at our downtown station late about 19% of the time. And we define late by too late to transfer to another bus that people might be wanting to transfer to, which is five minutes. Most of our buses have a five-minute window. If they're more than five minutes late, then people might be waiting as little as 15 minutes, but sometimes as long as an hour or more for the next bus that they're transferring to. Our standard is 10 minutes. We don't want any route more than, I'm sorry, our standard is 10%. We don't want any route more than 10% late throughout the course of an average day. This route is already 19%, is late 19% of the time. So we're sensitive to the running time issues for our passengers. We are very supportive of the additional crossings on Alabama, very supportive, even though we know that very well may slow us down a little bit. And in our minds, we have mitigated that by reducing the number of stops on the north side of Alabama coming into town. We think those two will more or less balance each other out. A reduction in the speed limit, which I know is being talked about, from 35 to potentially 25, or whatever it might be, we think is going to tip that balance back possibly toward causing this route to be even more late than it is now. So for that reason, we are, WTA is comfortable and very satisfied with the existing speed limit on Alabama, and we would urge you to maintain it as long as you can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Wendy Harris, and if there's anyone else who would like to speak, please do come down now at this time and form a line. You can also form a line up at the top and use that microphone if you'd wish.
Wendy Harris, I'm here to speak against the public access proposal by the staff that was approved today. One of the things I've learned to appreciate, living in Bellingham, is that when you get to know people, it becomes very hard to disagree with them. And it becomes even harder to do that publicly. And it becomes even harder to do that when you don't have any backing. And I watched the, some of the council committee of the whole, and I consistently saw council member Lillquist doing that. And Michael, I know we've had problems in the past. I want to be the first one to stand up here and thank you for acting on behalf of the public's interest. And I think people should know how diligently you were asking questions without any backing, and I appreciate that. For everybody else, I'd like to ask you to please stop signing blank checks. This is what I see happening with the staff. The mayor and her staff bring you proposals, they ask you to fund, and they don't give you any details. And they say, "Well, come back and fill it in later." All of you were elected because of your own views and values that you bring, and when you sign a blank check like that, you're depriving the public of a voice. And that's kind of ironic, because that's what we're talking about now, is the public's voice. And I'm very concerned about a proposal that is supposed to allow the public to have a voice, and yet it's being developed by the staff privately, without transparency, and without public input. That itself should be a big red flag, that something's wrong with this program. So at a minimum, I hope when this comes forward, that you'll allow a public hearing, so the public can weigh in. But really, it's much more preferable to have the public working with the mayor and her staff as this program's being developed. One of the concerns I have is that I heard there were intentions to hire consultants to help administer and run this program. Well, the problem is, if you hire consultants, they work for the city, they don't work for the public. And everyone acts with the best intentions. But social surveys have established that we all have bias, and nobody likes to work against their own interests, even if it's unintentional and it's unconscious. And that's why the public really needs to be in control of its own public access channel. It needs to have control over those programs. So, you know, this is not a city that has a history of really being welcoming to the voice of dissent. If you look at citizen advisory boards, I'm not seeing a lot of dissent on those boards. If you look at the Planning Commission, we have a Planning Commission full of people that are all pro-development. So the best intentions may be there, but they're not being effectuated in what's moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you Wendy. Anyone else, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself, and use your three minutes.
Hello, my name is Mary Keen, and I just came today to introduce myself, because I'm bringing a new business to Bellingham, and that's Makerspace. And I don't know if anyone's familiar with that, but it's a business model that's doing quite well throughout the country. And what it is, is it brings some light manufacturing machinery to the area that is open to the community. It's run like a gym membership. So particularly, our specialty at the moment is 3D printing. And not only can we 3D print in a variety of materials, but we actually have an MCOR Iris machine, which is a 3D paper printer, and it is the only one in the Pacific Northwest. The nearest one, actually, is Yukon Territory.
Okay, thank you.
And it will also, in two parts, so we'll have a community.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to gavel you. We don't allow promoting commercial activities at the pulpit, so it sounds like that's what's happening.
Oh, actually, I was going to be talking about the education program that we're going to be bringing.
If it's something for our edification to be able to be better at council, or public information.
I guess I felt like it was public information.
If it is, go ahead.
That the Foundry will also be bringing a global connected learning program to the school districts.
Okay, great.
Where we'll be in conjunction, we'll be learning some 3D printing, and in conjunction, another classroom, either in Rwanda, Mali, or Pakistan, will also be learning the same curriculum. And then we'll be able to communicate through video letters, so that the children will be able to get not just the technology education, but also a lot of the cultural and language and everything else.
Wonderful. Thank you for clarifying. Thank you. Okay, who's next?
It's me. Hi, everyone. I'm Jay Riley Sweeney at 2826 Nevada. I'm a Roosevelt Neighborhood resident and a safety enthusiast. And I came here originally to praise the city for the fantastic compromise that they came up with about the C-curb. I was opposed to the full-fledged C-curb, and when they removed that middle section, I said, "You know what? I can live with this. This is a good example of the city listening to the neighborhood and incorporating their feedback into their proposal." And it was really, it was a happy moment in which we could all walk away happy. Naturally, that dream slipped away today. When I heard talk that this morning at the work session, they were speaking about the delayed C-curb. No, 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 no. Delayed C-curb means that it will happen at some time. Are we now getting mixed reports? I'm getting shakes ahead.
Let's continue our comment and then we'll address that.
My point is, that the central C-curb, it would be really good if it was not delayed but dead. Let's bury it deep, okay? I really liked the compromise. Let's stick with that. That's something that I support, and a good chunk of, I imagine that many of my neighbors will join me in that. But when we hear about the central C-curb rising from the dead, we've had enough zombie activity in our city, we don't need zombie C-curbs to be concerned with as well. So, thank you all.
Thank you Riley.
And go public access.
Please, folks, please refrain from applause. Thank you. Whoever's next, step up.
Hi, my name's Teri Hall, and I'm on Queen Street. Sorry. I am here for sort of the same reasons Riley is. I was originally thrilled to hear that you guys were listening to us, that there was a compromise, that the central section of the C-curb was not going to happen. I know many of, I have to speak for some of my neighbors, because many of my neighbors who are still being curbed are not happy, because the focus on removing the central section is about access, that those dead-end streets have no access, and the other streets have access. But what isn't being focused on there is the idea that many people have come to you with, I know, that it's about a neighborhood. It's not just about access and convenience. It's about turning the neighborhood into an industrial thruway, separating the neighborhood, not caring about the extra cars going down those streets that they're still going to be going down. And I'm sure you guys have in your email boxes, I got one today that I know was sent to you, property values are going to go down in those sections. I also heard that there was talk of a delayed C-curb in this morning's meeting, which is alarming. I hope that's not true. If it's not true, great. You know, never mind. But we're really concerned that, you know, what's concerning about the process is this, the public didn't have anything to respond to until March. We were not aware of what the plan was. When we did begin to respond, we were simply rebuffed. When we responded stronger, we were told that the grant required a C-curb all the way down Alabama, we wouldn't get it. Now we're being told, "Oh, we're not going to put the C-curb all the way down Alabama," and it appears we're still getting the grant. So what is true here, what is false? Why is the public not being, why are the residents not being informed? I think we could have come together long ago, and I know committee work is horrible and terrible and difficult, but there's a lot of really smart people in the Roosevelt Neighborhood, and a lot of really reasonable people who want their neighborhood to be a neighborhood. We're struggling to do that. We still find this punitive. We could have worked together with Public Works, I think, to come up with a solution that met safety grant requirements and didn't penalize the neighborhood in this way. So the process has been a very upsetting thing for many of us. I hope you guys don't vote this through. I hope you think about it more. I know that we are at the 11th hour. That is not through your fault. It's not through the residents' fault. I really hope you do think about it a little bit more, about what those C-curbs are going to do to the neighborhood. If this is the only compromise that we can have, we're grateful for the compromise. But I have to say, the feedback I've received is that the main issues we were trying to bring to your attention weren't really understood, at least not by Public Works, because their focus is the access only. I do understand safety is an issue. I want Alabama to be safe. With all due respect to WTA, if you're behind on your routes, add some buses. I know it's expensive. I know that's not a great answer. But don't cause a residence, you know, to be penalized in this way, to not be on time on WTA routes.
Thank you. Kelly?
Thank you. Kelly Peterson, 2536 Queen Street. I'd like to start by thanking you, City Council, for asking Public Works to come back and work with the neighborhood on a compromise that would work for us. Unfortunately, the discussion was a one-way conversation, as Teri said. We do appreciate the idea of the removal of some of the C-curb, especially if that remains a removed portion. There are still sections of the neighborhood who will be facing 350 extra cars a day on their back streets that still don't have sidewalks, have open ditches. There are still children playing in those streets. We did hear today talk from a couple of our council members, and we really appreciate it, that they would like to see their speed limit reduced. The traffic issues along Alabama are 15 hours a day, or 15 hours a week. The rest of us live here 168 hours a week. The speeding issues are a problem, not during the morning and afternoon commutes, but in between, after, and over the weekends. Reducing the speed limit would help keep Alabama safer 168 hours a week, not just the 15 hours of commute time. And finally, we think that the C-curb idea in general is short-sighted. With the growth that Public Works says we're to expect on Alabama, why are we even considering this? Why aren't we considering their suggestion of increasing Alabama to five lanes with the central turn lane? It's what makes sense to us. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Charlie Storrs, 2626 Valencia Street. I am incredibly handicapped, because my information is coming solely from the article in the Bellingham Herald. I did not make it this morning. Three people sent me links that supposedly got to the new document, and they did not get to the new document. I went to the city of Bellingham website and used the search engine, and did not even get close to any sort of a new document, so I really don't know any of the details. It seems to me, however, in general, we spend a lot of money on roads and roads improvements. The possible $15 million grant would be fun, but it's clearly not a big part of our street budgets. We are spending an awful lot of money, and if it weren't for the grant, we would not be spending it on the C-curb. I don't have a problem with the C-curb going over the freeway bridge. Moore Street is pretty much a blind little spot there. I do object to the C-curb on the east side of Woburn. I don't feel that C-curbs are appropriate for a residential neighborhood. And if they're not good for the main section of the Roosevelt Neighborhood, the people on the other side of Woburn, whether they like it or not, are still part of the Roosevelt Neighborhood, and I think I should stand up for them and let them say that it's not good for my neighborhood, it's not good for their neighborhood right across Woburn. I don't know the details of the plan, so I don't know if you're planning on blocking off taking a right turn, or a left-hand turn on King Street. If you're not going to let me make the left-hand turn as I go down Alabama on King Street, then I'm going to have to go around the corner at James Street, and I'll be making my left-hand turn into Trader Joe's or a garden spot on James Street. So we've got the accidents off of Alabama Street, we just moved them over to James Street. I don't think that's a big improvement. I did participate in the public action we had on Alabama, and one thing I noticed was that there were an awful lot of drivers texting and telephoning as they drove. So there are rules on the books that are just not getting enforced. If you want to improve the safety, tell Bellingham Police to get out there and stop the texting and driving, and stop the cell phone and driving. The people who did stop The people who did stop and talk to me, and this was a big eye-opener for me, were the people on the motorcycles. The motorcycles and the scooters do not want a C-curb. If somebody is merging into them, they want to be able to get into that empty lane so they don't get killed. This is more important than worrying about fender benders. This is life and death for the people riding motorcycles and scooters. So, thank you for your time, and when I see the plan, I'll probably have a little more to say.
Thank you, Charlie. Charles?
Yes.
Oh, Charles is after you.
Charles Law, Bellingham. I was at the morning meeting, planning meeting on the Alabama corridor. Oh, boy.
Sorry about that.
What my, what some of my concerns were, were the implementing of the flashing red light, the hawk. And I don't know if this came, I think it came up a little bit in the session, but I'm worried about the speed it takes, the time it takes to cross. I don't think that was brought up very well. If you're in the middle and the light turns totally red, what do you do? Do drivers stop? When it's flashing, do they stop? I think we need a little bit more education on that because it's a new installation for the City of Bellingham. Also, I mean, for the drivers and pedestrians, I think they both need to find out how these things work before we really put them in. I recall when we put the crosswalk in on St. Paul, there was no informational sign that said there was a, there was a transition in trap, in the traffic revision. It was just put in, and people were, "Oh, well, this is how you do it." But there's a lot of people that, it was new, and it gets run quite a bit now. So, I'm a little afraid with these hawks, that might happen with them too. And I think we're having four put in right now. I mean, this is in the plan. The other, the other thing, you know, with, with the bus service, one person said something about adding a bus. If you, if you're, if you're 19% behind, and you, and that's constant, then you should be doing something, and I don't think it has anything to do with the corridor. I think it's got something to do with the, the way you manage your schedule. I, I don't think it has anything to do with us. As for, as for monitoring the success or failure of this project, I hate to say this, but it might be a vested interest in seeing this project fail. I think we should have an independent monitor to monitor this project and see if it does work. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
Good evening, Rick Trudini, Roosevelt Neighborhood. During my 30 years living in Bellingham, our local print media has notified our citizens when events impact them. We've heard loud and clear and often, when retail moved north, we've heard about the real estate market, good or bad, we've heard about zombies, we've heard when we get a new finance director and a new city council. Somehow partnerships have been developed to feed this information to the local print media, be it Chamber of Commerce, realtors, fans of zombies, or our city government. The recent coverage of the Alabama Street Road Project somehow, somehow did not seem to get the same attention, not even the attention that the zombies got. Maybe I am politically naive, but I hope that no media source should be selective in the info that they hand out, especially from our elected officials who've been elected to give the citizens all the information on the topic, not just what will make it easy for a controversial topic to slip by citizens' eyes. And then regarding the bus as well, I agree with Charles that start the buses a little earlier. If this is the dog that wags its tail, or the tail that wags its dog, whatever that phrase is, if that bus starts early. I ride the 331 most every morning, and that bus is crowded from 7:00 AM on. Use signs, use those no fireworks signs that we had last year to inform the public that one, the speed limit's going to be lowered to 30, one, that get off your cell phones, and one, that you might have to go a little slower on that street to make it more helpful for the, for the citizens that live there. We are fortunate that neighborhoods are active in looking out for themselves, being proactive to controversy as necessary, and in the Roosevelt neighborhood, this will continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Patty Mitchell. I live on Moore Street, and I'm here to oppose the C-curb. I'd like to thank Public Works, though, for the work that they have put in on this project. It's been an interesting one and a little bumpy along the way. They've made some suggestions, and they've somewhat listened to the concerns of the neighborhood, but it is an ongoing process, and it's, it's hard work for everyone. I'd like to thank Mayor Kelly Linville and the entire City Council for your thoughtful consideration in listening to the concerns of the neighborhood and acting on the recommendations of Public Works. However, I would like to just go on record that I strongly oppose any C-curb, any C-curb on the Alabama corridor. This morning in the work session, Public Works plans still were to install a C-curb from the bridge, from the IFI Bridge through Moore Street, Nevada, and Pacific. And there's also, in that alternative plan, reference to installing the pedestrian-activated crosswalk also at Moore. That's confusing information to me. I don't quite understand that concept. Does that mean that there would be a curb at Moore, a C-curb at Moore Street and a light? And when people are crossing Alabama, are they going to have to jump that curb? I just don't understand the wording and would like some clarification on that, and I'm sure you can do that. But I'm confident that the expert engineers will solve these difficult problems and that City Council will vote in a manner that respects the wishes of the Roosevelt neighborhood and all of the safety of Bellingham. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Joy?
Good evening, I'm Joy Gilfillan from Bellingham. I've been a citizen of Bellingham for, since the 70s. I got involved in politics back in '74, working in the state legislature. I left politics because of polarization back then and got involved in free enterprise, and I've been doing community development ever since. Over the last couple of years, I've been involved in watching the process that has happened in government regarding the EIS processes and the political processes that are very polarizing, both on the Port Project, on the coal terminals, on the water issues, on the jail issues. It's endemic and pandemic in our country right now that what we're doing is we're polarizing our population, and we are not listening to our people. We are listening to political politics, we're listening to corporations, we're listening to major media. Public access media is absolutely crucial right now, and we in Washington State, we're in Watkins County, are really standing on the pinnacle of major change in America. We have major poverty. Poverty is not the discussion in the, in, in politics. We have major problems with our prison industrial complex. That is not the conversation. We have major problems with environmental issues, with water issues, with economic issues. All of these issues must be addressed. And the one way we could do it, and the one way that, we are in a position, a brilliant position right now, we want public access television. Yes, we do. But we don't want hired consultants who are traditionally supported by hired consultants and are supported by the bureaucracy giving us recommendations as to how that public access television should be operated. What we need more than anything right now is free press. What we need more than anything is to be able to allow, if you want to hire consultants to give you advice, hire a bunch of free radical people. Hire the people who are running social media. Social media is running our world right now, and the government doesn't understand it. Bureaucrats don't understand it. I'm not speaking to some of you. Some of you are very aware. But our public deserves a public conversation about the issues that are facing us. They do not need more pandering, and they do not need, you know, one of the biggest concerns I have right now is that all of you guys are doing the best public service possible. All the Port Commissioners, all the county council, you guys are working your butts off, and I get it. And you know what? You're at threat for lawsuits, county, city, everybody's sued over something. And we're all afraid of having a real-world conversation. We need those real-world conversations badly. So, I implore you, whoever is making these decisions about public access television, encourage us to really have it. Really have it. And invite the free enterprise people who are being snuffed out of the market right now. The little tiny, small citizen of this community is being snuffed. We are being shut down. Our middle class is being shut down. Our high end is making a killing, and we're enabling the process to happen if we vote for shutting down free access. We need access. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Next.
Hi, Tom Brenton, Alabama neighborhood. I'm going to weigh in one last time for the C-curb. I understand, thank you, first of all, for all your attention and, and listening to us and working, and I appreciate that. I spoke with a traffic engineer in the City of Shoreline today and asked them, apparently they had some C-curbs a while back that they uninstalled as a result of them not working. I asked him about that, and he couldn't recall exactly where they were. He recalled that they did. He did say, however, that in the 22 years he's been a traffic engineer, all of the C-curbs he's ever installed have always been a maintenance nightmare. They've always been a continual maintenance problem. People run into them, people accidentally roll over them, and there's two ways to epoxy them or pin them down, and, you know, that's up to the engineers. But they've, either way, they've always been a maintenance problem. They've also caused a lot of lawsuits down there as a result of people interfering with them, rubble on the road and whatnot. I don't see that, and, and that combined with the new alternate proposal of having sections of C-curbs makes the breaks in the curb, where he said that's where it typically happens, is at the end of the curb. So, we're kind of creating this situation in this alternate proposal to create something that I don't think the city really wants, nor do the residents. And instinctively, we're going to have growth there. We're going to have a lot of growth. The other primary ulteriors are going to feed more traffic onto Alabama. And I don't see a C-curb being a real sustainable way of dealing with that projected growth. I ask, and I know I'm not going to get an answer now, but I'd like to continue this conversation in the 11th hour, please, and as to, is a fifth lane not a viable option? Because it sure seems like a viable way to deal with future growth, not create hazards, not create potential lawsuits, and keep everybody happy. Thanks.
You. Anyone else? Okay. Going to go ahead and close the public comment period. And we've got two presentations we'll move into this evening, first being recognition of 2014 Essence of Bellingham Photo Competition winners. And should I go ahead and read this little intro? Okay. Bellingham Mayor Kelly Linville and the Bellingham City Council will recognize the top five winners of the 2014 Essence of Bellingham Photo Competition sponsored by the City of Bellingham and the Waukam Museum. Winners receive special recognition by city officials and have their photographs featured on BTV 10 and the city website, displayed at City Hall, and added to the museum's photo archives. Ooh, that's cool. Janice Keller, Communications Manager, in her final presentation as Communications Manager at the City of Bellingham. Take it away.
Thank you, Kathy. So, we're a little behind tonight. I'm going to, I'm going to just speed right through this so we can get our winners down here. This is the ninth year of the Essence of Bellingham Photo Competition. We had 225 entries this year from Watkins County residents, amateurs and professionals of all ages, and that's a few fewer than in the past, so I encourage you to get started now, taking photographs for next year's competition. The winning entries were selected based, based on photographic quality, subject matter, and most importantly, how well Bellingham's essence was captured, and that's up to the viewer usually. The jury represented the Waukam Museum, the Bellingham Arts Commission, and the City of Bellingham Mayor's Office and Planning and Community Development. And special thanks to my colleague Stephen Niedermeyer, who coordinated the day of jurying 225 photos. All of the entries are posted on the city website. Most of, most of them will be played on BTV 10 during the year, and many of them are on display downstairs in the lobby through June 25th. And then, as Kathy mentioned and thought was very cool, they'll be added to the museum's photo collection so that in the future, people can look back and enjoy them. So, now on to our winners. Alice, can I have you come on down? The best of class for 5th through 8th grade. Kelly, would you like to join me as well? Sorry, I forgot an important part. Alice Horton was the winner of our 5th through 8th grade category for her beautiful sunset silhouette. And we're happy to congratulate, congratulate Alice tonight.
Come on by, Alice.
And Alice's dad also won several honorable mentions, so it was a family occasion.
Thank you.
Isaac, do you want to come on down? Isaac's photo is a San Juan sunset, and he is the winner of the high school category. And this beautiful photograph is already being used in several places on social media and the city website. So, thank you, Isaac, for making that possible. Our third place winner was Lou Nixick for this Bellingham Bay at night photograph, and Lou is out of town and couldn't make it tonight. Tom, are you here? I think Tom didn't make it either. So, our second place winner, I thought he was going to join us tonight, was our second place winner last year, Thomas Calderon. He's a Western student, and he took this photograph of someone reading on campus, and you can, I don't think I have a cursor. There she is. You can just barely see her. And Adrian, would you like to join us? So, our top photo this year is a photograph of the Bellingham Herald Building called Bellingham Herald at Night, and it was shot by Adrian Ortiz. And we're very pleased to welcome him tonight and congratulate him on his beautiful picture of our downtown nightlife. So, thank you very much to our winners tonight and everyone else who, and everyone else who participated this year, and I hope you'll enter next year. Thanks.
Thank you, Janice.
Thank you very much, Janice.
Okay, moving into our second presentation of the evening on a much more serious topic. Resolution commemorating the 15th anniversary of the Waukam Creek Pipeline explosion. On June 10th, 1999, a pipeline explosion in Watkins Falls Park tragically took the lives of three young people and destroyed 26 acres of parkland. While strides have been made in legislation that helps make these types of accidents preventable, our community still mourns this tragic day and the lives lost. And presented this afternoon, or this evening, by Mayor Kelly Linville.
Thank you very much, Council, for taking some time out of, I know this busy meeting, to allow me to read this resolution. On June 10th, 1999, I was sitting in a hotel room on the Columbia River, and I heard a knock at my door, and it was Representative Jim, Jeff Morris, and he said, "Go to the, go to the TV and turn it on. There's been a horrible explosion in your city." And that started- And that started a year-long track to pass a pipeline safety bill in the city for this, I was passing it for the City of Bellingham, but as a state legislator, obviously, for the whole, the whole state. And there's a memorial that's been organized, and the woman that organized the memorial told me that she believes that this horrible tragedy in Bellingham and the action that the state made have prompted with help from people like Carl Wymer and others to have the federal government look more closely at regulations for pipelines. And we never want that kind of a tragedy to happen in our community or any other community. So having said that, it was a pretty emotional time back then with the, with the students and the children being lost and much of the other damage that was done. So I'd like to read the resolution. A resolution recognizing the 15-year anniversary of the Olympic Pipeline Explosion. Whereas on June 10th, 1999, a pipeline ruptured in Bellingham, releasing approximately 237,000 gallons of unleaded gasoline into Waukam Creek in Waukam Falls Park. And whereas, the gasoline ignited and exploded, causing the death of two young boys and a young man who were beloved residents of this community. And whereas, the explosion burned approximately 26 acres of trees and meadows and killed all aquatic life in three miles of Waukam Creek. And whereas, after 15 years of intense restoration actions, Waukam Creek ecosystems showed significant signs of recovery. And whereas, numerous citizens and agencies came together to press the federal government to pass legislation to prevent such a tragic event from happening in any other community, resulting in the Pipeline Safety Improvement Act of 2002 and the Pipeline Inspection, Protection, and Enforcement and Safety Act of 2006. And whereas, June 10th is recognized as National Pipeline Safety Day, now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Bellingham recognizes the 15-year anniversary of the Pipe, Olympic Pipeline Explosion in Waukam Falls Park, and encourages our community to observe and honor this day and those affected by these tragic events.
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? I'm glad you read that. I don't think I could have. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Okay. And I'll actually have, will be reading that tomorrow at the commemorative event in the afternoon in the mayor's absence. Yeah. Okay, we're going to move into a public hearing this evening. One public hearing. Public Works will present and we'll have a public hearing regarding the draft 2015 through 2020 Transportation Improvement Program, otherwise known affectionately or otherwise as the TIP. The six-year Transportation Improvement Program is adopted annually to plan and program public funding toward capital improvements to Bellingham's multimodal transportation network. State law requires cities to adopt the TIP before July 1st of each year. The draft 2015 to 2020 TIP is based on staff recommendations consistent with the city comprehensive plan and council policy. Staff presented the draft TIP to the Public Works Advisory Board and the Transportation Commission on May 13th. They will present specific funding information regarding all projects listed on the draft TIP, followed by a public hearing tonight. A council work session to consider adoption of the draft 2015 to 2020 TIP will be held June 23rd of this year. That's our next meeting in two weeks. And I'll turn it over to Ted Carlson.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. I think I'll just turn it right over to Chris. He'll run through the projects in the draft TIP. As Council President Lehman mentioned, we do plan on coming back for a work session. So we received a couple of questions already from Councilmember Lillicust. We can certainly address those tonight. We can also address questions in more detail at the work session. And based on the presentation tonight, any questions that council may have, can certainly send those on to us or give them to us tonight, or send them an email and we'll be prepared to address those at the work session at your following meeting. So with that, turn it over to Chris for the presentation.
Good evening, Council. Chris Como, Public Works. As President Lehman mentioned, our public process is shown here on the screen. We do this each and every year. For the benefit of those who are new council members, I'm just going to talk about some things that others have heard many, many times. But we begin this process essentially in April. We start working with a liaison from the Transportation Commission. We have internal meetings, staff and transportation commissioners. Then we get together with the Transportation Commission and the Public Works Advisory Board, and we go through these projects and, and the Transportation Commission makes a recommendation based on the presentation we do at their meeting. That happened on May 13th, and here we are. The Transportation Commission passed a resolution generally supportive of what you're going to see here tonight. This actually is not part of the TIP document. It's something we add just as a courtesy to show everybody what we intend to construct this year in 2014. These are places around town that you can expect construction activity. You've already seen quite a bit through the downtown area. Those are the rain gardens going on. But these are some other projects around town that you'll probably start to see some activity pretty quickly. We've got our arterial resurfacing program is the first thing listed up here, and that's Electric Avenue, 14th Street, Hawthorne and Kellogg on Electric. It'll be a resurfacing project from Arbor where we put the flashing crosswalk in a couple of years ago, 2011, down to Ohio Street. It's really great because it's an old concrete street section, but we're going to be able to resurface it with asphalt, have a nice clean surface on it. It'll be smooth for biking and walking on the edges, et cetera. 14th Street is getting an overlay. It will have shared lane markings added as recommended by the Bicycle Master Plan, at least that's the plan. Hawthorne Street in the Edgemore Neighborhood from the middle school up to Fieldston is also getting an overlay, and a crossing is going to be added at Bay, I think it is. And then Kellogg up by Meridian. You've heard a bunch of things about the James Street Bridge replacement and the corridor improvements. Those are the next things on the list here. Those are going in. The James Street project will not be the complete project. You'll see, you'll hear more about that in just a minute, the James Woodstock intersection. That'll be closed for six months. It's pretty impactful, but it's the only way to do it, to avoid additional cost. Chestnut Bay Bridge Rehabilitation and Repair is resurfacing and rehabilitating the bridge. That's in our downtown area. That's also going to require a street closure for some time, possibly up to six months. We show the amount of money that the city spends on contracting with WTA for Sunday service and other transit improvements that have been made here. And then these are the non-motorized transportation projects that are funded by TBD. There's a few of them in here that are getting ready to go to construction right now, 25th Street near the university, just south of the university. And you've got a couple that may not, we may not get to this year. Eliza Avenue Sidewalk and Bike Lane and Ohio Ellis Intersection, as well as Ohio Street Bike Lanes. That's because we've lost some staff and those projects need to be reassigned. They also need to be done during the summertime to be less impactful to schools and WTA and things like that. So hopefully we'll, we'll have additional staff to address those, but we're not sure we can get to those this year. They are on the list. You heard earlier today about the Waukam Creek Multi-Use Trail Bridge Reconstruction here. That'll play into some things that you'll hear about later tonight. And I'm not sure what the status of the railroad crossing, the South Bay Trail is. I know that that's on the list, but I'm not sure if that's been resolved or not yet. And of course, we finished our feasibility study for Alabama, and we've made a recommendation, and there'll be more conversation about that, I'm sure.
Chris, just briefly, I can give a brief update on the Boulevard Park pedestrian crossing. We are in the process of finalizing the contract with Burlington Northern. We're very, very close to having an agreed contract with them. As a reminder, Burlington Northern does all of the work when they're talking about their crossings. So the city's funding the project. We don't actually go out to bid. Burlington Northern does it with their forces and their contractors and then invoices us. But we're very close to coming to an agreement. We hope that it gets constructed this year, but when working with the railroad, they set the schedule. We just want to be prepared and ready to come in when they're, when they're, when they're doing the work, because we will do some paving of the approaches to the crossing. Burlington Northern does all of the work within their limited access.
Thanks, Ted. So these are the, the two funding sheets that cover all the projects, and there's a couple of important things to cover, especially for new council members. And the way our TIP is organized is the first three years, the projects have to show that they're completely funded. So you see this green, these few green columns here, it says funded. Projects that have full funding go in these first, these first three years of the six-year TIP. If they don't have complete funding, they go in the last three years here under unfunded. And it's the projects further down the list that you typically see in that column. We'll explain that more as we go, but that's a very important distinction between our TIP and other TIPS you might see out there. So what you see, it's, it's not in rank priority order for any other reason that these are funded projects. And what you can see here are different funding sources, and you can see the amount of grant money that we've been able to successfully secure to get these projects done. There's some that we're currently seeking grants for, and we'll talk about that as we go. But then you get down here to some that, that don't have any funding, and you see a bunch of unknown funding listed. They're important projects. We simply don't have the funding at this time. This is just the cumulative totals shown in the document. I don't really need to spend any time talking about this, other than to point out one more time that we've got quite a bit of state and federal grant money in here. Here's a geographic representation of where the projects lie throughout the city. You can see some clusters. You got the, the Baker View Corridor area, the northwest part of the city. You've got the James Street Corridor over here. You've got the Alabama Corridor here. You've got the waterfront. So now we get into our arterial resurfacing program looking forward, and you might notice that in the years 2015 and 2016, right off the bat, there's some funding that's been removed from the street fund, as well as the TBD resurfacing program. And that's because when we go out and get state and federal grants, we have to provide local matching funds. When we do overlay projects, big overlay projects, they require quite a bit of money. So some of that money's been extracted. In 2015, a million dollars is allocated to Alabama for resurfacing. In 2016, some of that money is going to the Mahogany Project as local match requirement. And then in 2016, the TBD resurfacing is going to the West Maplewood Resurfacing Project, which I'll talk about in just a little bit. So that's what happened to the funding in those particular columns, but the rest of it is essentially a 1.5 to 2% increase year to year at the direction of the Finance Director. Number two is our Transit Service line item, and this, this is TBD funded. This has to do with the contract that the city has had with WTA to restore Sunday bus service in Bellingham after the, the cuts made by the agency. Bellingham worked with WTA to get that reinstituted. But what it's showing is that the contract ends in the year 2016, so from 2017 forward, there's zeros. We don't know if the contract will be renewed or not, but that's what happens to the funding line down here. There's been a transit reserve line where there's been some money, but that's where you see all the money going. The TBD has been 1/3, 1/3, 1/3 arterial resurfacing, transit, and non-motorized. So in the transit column, it all goes to this reserve line. Brings us to the non-motorized portion of the TBD funding source. And this has been a great funding source for us. We've been able to do a lot of different non-motorized projects, primarily pedestrian at this point, but when we can, we've been able to add some bike lanes through resurfacing projects. Interestingly, as we move forward, and again, this is the 2015 to 2020 six-year TIP, the bike plan hopefully will be approved later this summer. So by the time we get to 2015, there's some great opportunities to actually do a lot of bicycle infrastructure projects using some of this money. I do want to also remind everybody that this is Public Works' recommendation in terms of non-motorized, but it's based on an opportunity we have to do a lot more with our money and make our money go farther, whether it's to go secure state and federal grants, or to actually take advantage of some opportunities we're doing with other capital and projects. We'll talk about that in just a minute. I'm not going to read the list. I'm, I'm going to actually show you what this looks like. This is some detailed pages talking about what's in our pedestrian and bicycle master plans. So interestingly, and predominantly with these, the recommendations for non-motorized transportation improvements, it's pretty much focused in the very center of the city and pretty much focused around the Alabama Corridor. What you see upon the screen is where we have some existing bike lanes on Barclay Boulevard. We've got existing bike lanes on Cornwall. You've got the multi-use railroad trail here. You've got the Waukam Creek Trail here. When we took the bike plan through the Transportation Commission, the Transportation Commission really wanted the bike plan to strongly emphasize crossings of Interstate 5. And so we tried to look at how could we possibly do some great work and, and some innovative projects, getting those I-5 crossings taken care of, but also what else is going on in our six-year TIP? And of course, you see the Alabama Corridor right here. You see the existing traffic signals that we have in place, and you're aware of the recommendations that we've made. With the non-motorized projects, we can take advantage of both the completion of the bicycle plan and look at what we call the Kentucky-Nevada-Texas Bike Boulevard. It starts over here in the Roosevelt neighborhood, in the eastern part of the neighborhood, and goes all the way down Texas Street, takes advantage of the traffic calming features that are already existing on Texas Street, goes down Nevada Street to Kentucky, goes on Kentucky underneath I-5 where there's an existing tunnel, and across James Street where we have a flashing crosswalk, all the way down Kentucky to the bike lanes on Cornwall and into downtown Bellingham. This is the number one ranked project in the Bellingham Bicycle Master Plan, the draft plan. Secondly, we can take advantage of the new crossing. We would be putting it undine in Alabama by adding sidewalk from Texas to Alabama on both sides of Undine Street. The new Hawk Crossing here at Alabama would also serve as both a pedestrian crossing and a bicycle crossing, as well as getting transit riders across. And then it would create a bicycle boulevard from Texas up to the railroad trail here. This is a, a Tier 1 bicycle boulevard project. I'm sorry, Tier 2 bicycle boulevard project, Tier 1 sidewalk project. In addition, we could take, do the same thing at St. Paul with the Hawk Crossing, putting sidewalks from, from Texas to St., I'm to Alabama on St. Paul, both sides, Tier 1 sidewalk project, and then Tier 2 bike project from Texas up to the railroad trail as a bike boulevard. Illinois Street is a bike boulevard. This is the number four ranked project in the Bicycle Master Plan. This is a existing overcrossing of I-5, the bicycle pedestrian bridge, takes people from the Roosevelt neighborhood across the freeway, again, over to Cornwall essentially, where there's bike lanes. And we could take advantage of the existing flashing crosswalk on Alabama at Grant Street and create a bike boulevard from Illinois down to Kentucky and then down to Ohio Street, where we've got a recommendation for bicycle lanes. But we need more time to do that project. That, that project requires parking to be removed on one side of the street in order to fit the bicycle lanes in. That takes a council decision, so there's got to be some process and planning with that. In addition to that, we can take advantage of the new Hawk signal proposed at Michigan and Alabama, and, and look at a bicycle boulevard all along Michigan down here to Texas and connecting this up here. Go look at putting a climbing lane on Lincoln Street from Lakeway down to Meeter and getting another crossing of I-5. This is, this goes onto the freeway on Meeter here and hooks into the existing bike lanes on Meeter and gets you over Waukam Creek and up to Ohio Street again. Then we could take advantage of the proposal to take the St. Paul flashing crosswalk, lift it, and put it down on Ellis Street to create a bike boulevard from Illinois down to Kentucky. Again, these are all Tier 1 and Tier 2 bicycle boulevard projects. They're at the top of the list in the draft Bicycle Master Plan. And then finally, here's Moore Street, taking advantage of the Hawk signal that's recommended at Moore Street in Alabama, to connect the railroad trail down to the Texas-Kentucky-Nevada complex. And, and this is the recommendation by Public Works to essentially begin to create our bicycle boulevard network centered around the Alabama project and, and hooking it into existing streets with bicycle lanes on them, as well as the multi-use trails that we have around town, and getting people across Interstate 5. Project number four is a grant that we secured two years ago, I believe it was now, to put some intersection improvements on Lincoln Street right near Carl Kozier School. There's going to be some curb bulbouts and crosswalk improvements made there, as well as a sidewalk added on the north side of Gladstone in the Puget Neighborhood. And that work will begin next year. And that work will begin next year. This is a sidewalk project, the Lincoln Street Park and Ride Sidewalk Improvements. Everybody's familiar with the big park and ride that's owned by Western Washington University and served by Wacom Transit, our transportation authority. The orange line here is the sidewalk along the frontage, and while it's Western's responsibility to construct a project like this, we had an opportunity to go out and get a grant, a state grant. So we partnered with Western and WTA. You can see that Western put in $50,000, WTA put in $15,000, and the city, the city used $15,000 of street funds to go secure $270,000 of state grant money to build this sidewalk. The timing is really perfect for this because there's a lot of development just up the street here, south of Fred Meyer Student Apartments. Those students will be able to walk down the sidewalk that the developer will have to add, cross at this intersection, get on buses that they have free bus passes for in their pockets. Project six is the Alabama Street Corridor, Phase Two. These are the physical improvements that we've been talking about. I don't think I really need to spend a whole lot more time talking about that tonight. Project number seven is another grant that we were able to secure, same funding source as the Alabama project, Highway Safety Improvement Funds, but this is for, it was initially for a citywide programmatic approach, but we, we were able to transfer this money to get the same kind of pedestrian bulbouts and cross, crosswalk improvements that we did at State and Maple a few years ago, or last year, I guess. That's going to happen at State and Laurel. This is an important project because, of course, this is another gateway to both all of the apartments being constructed down here on the Moore site, as well as our farmer's market area, connecting the Seehome neighborhood and allowing people to cross State Street safely. Project eight is Granary Blodel. This is Phase One. This project is being worked on right now, and this is a federal grant, and this is to construct a brand-new arterial street through the waterfront, starting at Roder Avenue here. This is all consistent with the waterfront district master plan, coming down here to just south of where the Commercial Green Loop is envisioned. And then you see this, this dashed line, that's, that's the next Phase Two. Federal requirement, or federal grant requirements don't allow you to build a dead-end arterial street, so what we need to do is, is take some local money and make a, a minimum standard connection over here to Cornwall, so that we can fulfill the federal grant requirements to have a through connection. And over time, as the waterfront redevelops, this street will be finished with all of the urban amenities, but right now, we're simply trying to make a connection. Project number 10 is the Arctic Avenue Multimodal Arterial, and that's up in northwest Bellingham. This street does not exist today. This street is completely funded and will be constructed by private development. This is part of the Costco proposal. That store is, is envisioned right here at the corner of Arctic and Mahogany. They will build this section of Arctic Avenue from West Bakerview up to another street here called Mahogany. Last year, this street was called Dover Street. The reason it's Arctic is the fire department asked us to change it for 911 response purposes to reduce confusion. There's a section of Dover Street right here that's residential, and this is not going to be connected to that section, so it's been renamed Arctic by the fire department. Project 11 is related to the James Street Corridor that I mentioned earlier, in terms of that being constructed this year. There's one piece that won't be constructed that, this year, and that's the intersection right here at Woodstock and James. The reason for that has to do with the Squalicum Creek reroute project. Before we can address this intersection, we have to go plug the current outlet for Sunset Pond over to Bug Lake. In order to do that, we have to finish the Squalicum Creek reroute to take it from a new outlet, go underneath I-5, along the Orchard Drive alignment here, shown in a dashed line, and then down into Bug Lake here. Once that is accomplished in 2015, we'll be able to go back in 2016 and readdress this intersection and finish this project, so that the through movement will be from James Street onto Woodstock. Right now, you just go through like this on James Street. There will actually be stop control here, so these cars headed northbound or south, or headed northbound will have to stop, and these cars going in this direction will be a continuous Project 12 is Mahogany. It's an east-west arterial that connects Northwest Avenue to Pacific Highway. This is on the north side of the Costco proposal. This project is shown in the six-year tip right now as unfunded, but through private development mitigation, we believe we can probably fill this funding gap and be able to complete this or get it under construction in 2016, hopefully. Project 13 is a project that we've been working on for about a year and a half now, in terms of a feasibility study to look at whether we should be putting left-turn lanes in here or converting this to a roundabout at this intersection. Bakerview, of course, is a major trucking route. James Street is a major north-south arterial. We saw all the work being done on the, on the southern portion of that, but there's a, a big collision history here at this intersection, as well as a speeding issue. And through the feasibility study, we were able to determine that the turn lanes wouldn't provide the capacity needed here in the long term. They also don't solve the speeding issue, and so a roundabout is the way to go. And, and what we're looking at here is basically trying to be as efficient as possible and maximize the footprint at this time, knowing that at some point in the future, there's going to be need for a lot more transportation capacity out here as the King Mountain neighborhood continues to develop. So we're going to try to have a, a footprint of a dual-lane roundabout, but operationally build it as a single-lane roundabout, be able to expand it when needed in the future without having to deal with mitigation all over again, knowing that environmental regulations are going to be changing. So that's the concept here. It's unfunded. We've had a federal grant to do the feasibility study and the design work that's going on. We're writing grants for this project right now, trying to get $3 million of funding to get this project underway. Project number 14 is, we call West Maplewood Avenue Multimodal Corridor Improvements. And this is essentially an opportunity to resurface West Maplewood. Much like Electric Avenue, this is a concrete street. It's part of Old Highway 99, and the, there's pedestrian sidewalk on the west side of the street over here, where you see these parked cars. There's, there's parking on the street. But over here on the east side, this is all extruded asphalt curb. It's just a pedestrian pathway, and a lot of times, cars will actually park in these gaps and block the pathway. It's very difficult to bike here just due to the surface conditions and no striped bike lanes. So when we go to try to resurface this street, and, and this is very high on the resurfacing list, we'll be able to add bike lanes in here, which is why this is essentially a TBD resurfacing project. But we've also just submitted a grant to DOT for this project to try to get sidewalk constructed on the east side of the street here, from northwest all the way up to Alderwood. In the TBD non-motorized project list, Alderwood sidewalks are listed as an opportunity or recommendation there by Public Works because it strengthens this grant application. If we could use TBD money to fund the Alderwood sidewalk on the south side and get this grant, Chucks and Middle School would be completely wrapped by pedestrian sidewalk. It'd be a really great achievement for us. We'd get bike lanes in here and a, a brand-new surface street. Again, just like Electric, it'd be done with a nice, smooth asphalt surfacing. Parking would be retained over here, and we'd have enough width for, for everything. Project 15 is the West Horton Road Project. This project is unfunded, but we've been working on it in terms of the design and engineering, as well as securing mitigation sites and doing mitigation planning. But you can see there's a big chunk of money that's missing, $4 million. The model for this project is the Fraser Street project. This is, this is the photograph here. You've got this pedestrian boardwalk. This is a very, very wet area. You heard a presentation today by the Parks Department about all the park activity. The right-of-way here is, is heavily constrained by environmental features and wetlands, which require significant mitigation, and so what we're trying to achieve here is a minimum footprint arterial with bike lanes on it, and then provide the pedestrian function over here on a separated boardwalk. This is the Fraser Street one, which is only six feet wide. The one that's conceived of for West Horton would be a little bit wider at eight feet, but very, very expensive, very complex project because of environmental issues. We have to go find this $4 million somewhere. Project number 16 is essentially a Parks project, but it's in the six-year tip because it's got some federal transportation enhancement money right here. So we've had it in here for many years. My understanding is that the Parks Department has written a grant recently to try to get some funding for this, but e- even if they get it, it's only about a half million dollars, so they still need about $2 million to get this project done. Project 17 is the Orchard Drive Extension. This is a grade-separated crossing of Interstate 5 going from James Street. The work we talked about on James Street goes from here at Orchard down to James and Woodstock here. This slide shows the Squalicum Creek reroute going under I-5. Dashed in purple here is the Orchard Drive Extension, would connect the entire King Mountain neighborhood that was annexed in 2009 to the core of the city over here, as well as be another backdoor entrance to the St. Joseph's Hospital area right in here. You can see that there's quite a bit of development that's been approved here through a rezoned process, as well as development down here, medical office complex on the north side of the hospital. So this road would provide tremendous benefit. In conjunction with the road, you would have an off-street Beta Baker Trail that would come down the old railroad bed and then go up to the intersection at James and Orchard, and then swing back down. There'd be, on the James Street project, there's a sidewalk going from Orchard all the way down to Sunset Pond Park, so these people will have the ability to walk down the street to the park. And then future users hopefully will have a trail facility to get themselves further east over here on a nice off-street trail. Project 18, James Street Multimodal Safety Improvements. This, this essentially is kind of the missing gap in James Street. This is Orchard Street right here, and then this is Bakerview here. So what we're talking about is from Bakerview down to Orchard, and this is essentially non-motorized improvement sidewalks and bike lanes. It's a very, very expensive project. There's a lot of environmental constraints out here and a very narrow roadway, some places ravines, which we have to figure out how to provide these types of facilities along this roadway. Project 19, North James Street Connection, takes James Street from its existing terminus here, the base of King Mountain at Gooding, up and through some subdivision development that's been approved, up and over King Mountain or around King Mountain, hooking into Van Wyke Road, and then over to Meridian Street further over here. And, and here's the photograph that shows that, kind of hooks over here to Meridian. Be a good north-south connection. It's in our comprehensive plan. The first phase will be built by a developer later this year. Project number 20 is a safety improvement project on Northwest Avenue, just north of Bakerview here. This photograph shows the Biolife Plasma Center under construction here. These are some sidewalks added in the recent past, and then sidewalks on Aldrich Road. So what this project would do is, would allow another through movement through the intersection. This becomes a drop-turn lane at Aldrich Road. So this essentially would be two lanes right here through this leg of the intersection, allowing a smoother movement through the intersection and a little bit safer movement for cars diverting to Aldrich. Project 21 is the Commercial Green Loop. This is part of the Waterfront District Master Plan. It's this dashed purple line, you can see it here. It connects to the Blodel, Granary Blodel project that we talked about earlier. This is a future phase of the waterfront. It's unfunded, but it's in here through the agreement with the city and the port about doing infrastructure down here in the waterfront. Project 22 was added last year to our six-year tip. This is a, essentially a non-motorized project. It would essentially take North Shore from Academy all the way to the city limits and add bike lanes, pervious concrete bike lanes, and a pervious concrete sidewalk on the east side of the street. Very expensive project, unfunded. Project 23 is a new project that we have decided to recommend this year. We, we completed $3.5 million worth of improvements on West Bakerview in 2013. That was the result of a 2011 value planning study that looked at a low-cost option to the state's recommendation for a $45 million reconstruction of the West Bakerview interchange. There isn't money for that, so step two of the value planning study was looking at adding a northbound on-ramp to this interchange on the correct side of the freeway. If people are wondering why it looks the way it does today, it's because back in the early '70s, when this interchange was built, the thought, the concept was that West Maplewood right here would be the conduit for people leaving Bellingham and immediately going on the flyover ramp onto northbound I-5. Quick and easy, you're out of town, and there you go. Unfortunately, history didn't play out that way. A few annexations later and a, a car dealership on Northwest prevented the Northwest interchange from being closed. Was going to be closed at the recommendation of DOT because of federal spacing requirements on the freeway, didn't get closed, so that's why it's on the other side of the freeway. What we're trying to do is, here's the northbound off-ramp right here in Bakerview. We're trying to basically add a northbound on-ramp, a proper on-ramp right here that would be braided underneath the freeway, and the next slide illustrates that. This kind of flips the configuration here, but here's the northbound off-ramp. So this would take a new ramp downhill and then braiding it under the existing flyover ramp here. And what we're trying to do is work with DOT and property owners to find out if we can do this. It's a big deal. Anytime you want to provide additional access to I-5, you have to work with the state and go through special procedures and get federal approval, but this would provide a lot of benefit. What it would allow us to do is essentially reverse the channelization we put on the bridge last year. We've now got two westbound lanes because we need cars to get over here to get on this on-ramp, but if we had this one and left this one in place, we would essentially be buying a tremendous amount of capacity on this bridge and delaying the need to widen the bridge for many, many years. That $45 million doesn't come in anytime soon, if ever. And so we would be able to re-channelize the bridge to two eastbound lanes and one westbound lane, because adding this would bleed a lot of westbound traffic off of the bridge. So we're buying capacity and time with this recommendation. It would cost about $10 million, which sounds like a lot of money, but it's still a bargain compared to $45 million interchange reconstruction, which you can only imagine how disruptive that would be to our city to try to reconstruct this interchange. It's a regional priority for Bellingham. We put it on our, our regional party list and working with legislators and lobbyists down in Olympia to try to find money for this. This is all the activity that's going on in north Bellingham. I definitely don't want to spend time talking about this map, but you can see there's a lot going on. And of course, there's annexation proposals on the west side of this interchange that are definitely going to have a transportation impact, and so we need to try to do everything we can to get things in place to get improvements made out here. That concludes my presentation. This is just kind of reiterating the public process we've had so far for this. We're here, the public hearing. There will be another work session on June 23rd, and then we are required to adopt this, the council's required to adopt this before July 1st each and every year. We need to send this to the COG to put on the regional tip, and then the state to put on the state tip, referred to as the STIP. And that's it.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? I just have one. We have a work session on the 23rd, and we're going to hope to make, to approve the tip that day?
That is our hope.
Yeah, okay, in time for the July 1st deadline. Okay. Yes, Michael?
Just a very small question. One of the, we received one comment letter, and I don't have it unfortunately, about some, I can't remember where it was, somewhere near Barclay.
Pedestrian crossing on Barclay.
For the tip, but I just want to make sure that the staff had that and you had a chance to look at those safety concerns.
Yes, we have received that letter. We've had conversations with the person that sent that in to us.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. We have two people signed up at this time, Paul Schronen and April Barker. Feel free to come forward and speak about anything on the tip that you would like us to know. And if there's anyone else who would like to speak, now's the time as well. April, oh, April, there you are. Great.
I'm April Barker. I live in the Birchwood neighborhood, and I'm speaking today as the Birchwood Neighborhood President. We've had a lot of activity in our neighborhood in the last year. I've kind of, I think, cut my teeth on some political stuff very quickly, and I wanted to just step up here and, on behalf of the neighborhood, thank the city, their departments, the mayor, you all, of course. You've been very patient with us, trying to organize our efforts and helping direct those efforts. Public Works especially, I know Ted has spent a lot of hours, as well as his staff, to kind of help us organize ourselves and give some really good feedback into what we need and what we value in our neighborhood, which sometimes, you know, that might be different than, than what other people see. So in that, we were able to come to a conclusion to really push forward on this West Maplewood project. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, I apologize for that, but I think between Alderwood and Northwest there, there's over 500 units, and, and currently, those are a lot of families, a lot of families that have children. I don't know if it's still politically correct to say latchkey children that are trying to get back from school and just get safe. to get back from school and just get safe in their homes while their parents work two and three jobs. So this project is just really supported by the neighborhood. We're really excited to see that you found a way to get it on there, and I hope that it continues to be supported by you all. And again, just a big thank you to all the different departments and the organization between them to help us organize our efforts and continue to improve on our neighborhoods. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you, April. Anyone else? There's, looks like a gentleman up at the top mic.
Oh yeah, Rick Giudini, Queen Street in the Roosevelt neighborhood. I do appreciate all the efforts that the city goes through to try to get these federal grants. Obviously, it makes what you need to do much easier, and I do appreciate the multimodal aspect of it, incorporating as many bike lanes as you can, sometimes at the expense of parking on some of the streets, like we found out on Cornwall, but that was mitigated with your expertise. One of my concerns on the Alabama corridor is the hawk light that is being proposed on Moore Street. I know when I come up Alabama to my home from the downtown area, more times than not, I'm looking at the freeway to see what's going on, and if suddenly there's a flashing light on the other side of the freeway, just a second or two that I'm distracted even though I'm not supposed to be, and if someone's in that crosswalk, I think that there's trouble ahead. So I'd like you to reconsider that option, and that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Wendy Harris. I just wanted to raise some general concerns about truly comprehensive planning, and my concern is that we're not planning our transportation projects around efficient wildlife, not efficient, a wildlife and habitat assessment because we haven't done one, and I think that's really important information. And the more that we continue to develop without having that kind of assessment and characterization done, the more that we're creating irreparable harm to wildlife corridors and habitat. And so I'm asking you, please, when, can we move forward with a comprehensive conservation strategy where we're looking at those issues so that we can incorporate them into our transportation planning? When we talk about multimodal transportation, can we have animal corridors as part of that? You know, when we don't plan for animal movement, we're creating danger for people and for animals. I almost hit a little baby deer yesterday, and I'm very careful when I drive this time of year, you know, going up Alabama Hill, that area is a wildlife crossing, and so I think we need to do a better job of planning for animals. And I would also like to ask a few questions, maybe Steph can answer when I'm done, about the overwater walkway. I'm a little confused about why we need more money. My understanding was it was $8 million, $4 million from Greenway Levy and $4 million from federal funding, and so I'm not sure what that additional money is for. And I'm also concerned because the permitting process and the SEPA review process on that was conducted at least three years ago, and at what point is that information good and when does it expire? We still don't have tribal consent to go forward with this, so I don't understand why it's moving forward. And we've had updated environmental information regarding the health of the Bentec community. We had a study recently by DOE indicating that Bellingham Bay has the worst sediment quality in Puget Sound, and one of the worst things for a marine ecosystem is an overwater structure of any kind. And because this is being added to the paddle-point trestle and to the, oh god, the name escapes me, the other famous one that everyone uses, it's not, no question they're popular and they're being used, but that's not our only criteria. So are we going to be revisiting some of the permitting criteria that we looked at because that information is getting dated, and there are people like me that do have concerns? Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Charles. Hit that button there.
Okay, Charles Law again. I'm still concerned about the hawks, the red light activated crossings on Moore Street, Nevada, and St. Paul, the additions, and Undine. You stated that you would have sidewalks south of Alabama on those streets. What about north on Alabama? What about sidewalks there? There's only sidewalks on one side.
That's correct. There is sidewalk on one side of both Undine and St. Paul. The proposal is simply from Texas to Alabama on both sides. Those are Tier 1 sidewalk projects in the pedestrian master plan.
So you couldn't get the monies for sidewalks north?
I'm not sure that north of Alabama, they're actually recommended in the pedestrian master plan. I could certainly go look at that, but the recommendation we've made are for the ones that are listed, and that's the section between Alabama and Texas.
Okay, thanks. My next one for enhancement, I would like for Public Works to consider daylighting Fever Creek.
Thank you, Charles. Anyone else wish to speak on the tip? Now's the time. We've got one more coming down.
My name's Aiden Hunter. I live at 2626 Toledo Street, Alabama, C-curb stuff, of course. Really curious, one thing, we didn't actually hear anything about this proposed, the new version of it. I read a little, kind of skimmed a little bit of it before, but would like to hear a little more details about what the newest version is. That'd be kind of nice. Also, I'm wondering about a couple of different things. When I think about making a decision in general, weighing the pros and cons as being a fairly simple, fairly simple thing, and if the cons outweigh the pros, then whatever it is shouldn't be done, or some other alternative should be. And in my book, the only pro to any of the suggestions is safety, but the cons big-time outweigh that one pro. And so I'm really curious about how that is being kind of thought about and how you weigh different things. One of the big things that I think should be weighed pretty much the same as safety is the integrity of our neighborhood. And just having these yellow curb things down the middle, no matter how much, you know, how long they actually stretch, it changes the vibe big-time. And my wife and I bought a house in this area just shy of two years ago now, and really don't want to be penalized, and that's the way it feels in a lot of ways, not just the newest version where we would have access to our cul-de-sac or our dead-end street, but just the whole vibe of that neighborhood changes in general, and don't want to be penalized for that. And I don't know what we did to you guys to have that happen. So that's, I'm also kind of curious about this. Has anybody seen that video about the solar freaking roadways? What about something like that? It's a totally different game, but the options would be limitless in terms of how you could redirect traffic, all kinds of things. Should be awesome. I don't know what the cost involved in that kind of thing is, but I do think that in general, other options are worth thinking about. And another thing about the sort of industrial feel that those yellow things create, I'm a realtor here in town, and I know for a fact that that does change property values, and in general, over the long run, buying a place, you know, you build equity over time, and it's supposed to be a good investment. When the whole dynamic of a neighborhood changes, that goes downhill. And one last thing too, similar kind of aspect here, I know that on the Texas street side, there was a, for this year since 1984, and been a pretty big stigma on that side of the, of Alabama for a long time, and I know there's been considerable amount of energy and effort put into cleaning it up and giving it a much better feel, and I feel like these yellow things down the center of Alabama is going to just totally wipe that out, going to go way back and have a totally different feel in general. So solar freaking roadways. Let's do that.
Thank you, Aiden. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, please do get up now and make a line at the microphone.
Steve Villaromen, I live at 2514 Toledo. Bought the house about six, eight years ago. Seems to be, the emphasis is on safety on Alabama Street because there's a large number of what's called accidents, but I'm going to suggest that they're probably actually preventable collisions caused by poor driving. If there was increased patrols, if you speed on Alabama, you're going to get a ticket. If you're texting on Alabama, you're going to get a ticket. If you change lanes without signaling you're going to get a ticket, the accidents will decrease. How many accidents were caused by people that are simply poor drivers and may have poor driving records? That seems to be, increased patrols might mitigate the quote-unquote "accidents" that occur on Alabama.
Thank you very much. Okay, that is the end of our public comment on the tip. Going to go ahead and turn it over to the will of the council. We do have a council work session already scheduled for June 23rd. Ted, do you need official direction to go ahead with that?
No, I believe we already have it on the council scheduler, so we're prepared to move forward, absent any other direction from the council.
Okay, we've got Jack and then Michael.
So normally what we would do in a situation like this would continue the public comment through written comment, but just close the verbal public hearing for tonight, and that's what, that's what you're intending on doing?
Yes. I can specify now, I have closed the verbal public hearing, and if I don't see any objection, we'll leave the public, the written public comment period open until the work session on the 23rd. Okay, head nod, so we're going to do that. Michael?
I have questions about a number of these, and I'll just save those and send you a few more letters, and we can discuss with the work session. But I do want to bring up something that's sort of outside of that. More and more now, there's long-range planning that has to do with the TBD, and the TBD is sort of stumbling along the non-motorized portion because we haven't had a bicycle and pedestrian master plans that look forward in the future. To the extent that we're going to start being able to build a work plan using those non-motorized funds in the tip and our transportation planning, I think it's a really good idea if the TBD actually adopts something like a tip, a several-year look ahead that will match the several-year look ahead on the city side. Because what I'm seeing now, which kind of bothers me, is in the tip, we're starting to commit to multi-year spending potentially for the non-motorized funds, and yet on our, wearing our other hat as TBD, we haven't. So I'd like for us to meet as a TBD to basically harmonize those plans when they're made, so city side matches TBD side. Otherwise, I feel really awkward doing one thing without checking my other half when I serve as a TBD board member. So if there's any, if there's no objection to that, I'd like us as a TBD board to sort of make that request of our TBD staff. Does that make sense to people? Do you like to discuss it well?
I think that made sense. So wouldn't we need to convene as the TBD board at another time to do that?
Yes. But if the council nodded, then the TBD president could actually get that moving. And since you're the TBD president...
Not the TBD board.
Yeah, I think the TBD president can decide to put things on the TBD agenda without head nods. And so I'm going to. Any other comments to what Michael just said? I think I want to piggyback a teeny bit. It's a good point about the interplay between those two entities and planning, and I know Kelly and I have been talking about the future of planning for TBD too, considering it's a time-sensitive or has an end date that we may or may not continue on in the future, and that'll affect, I mean, we wouldn't want to put a lot of energy into planning how to work these things together probably if it's definitively going to end in a few years. I don't know what that would take anyway. Okay, I'm babbling. Who would like the floor? Jack?
So Michael, are you thinking that we would have a TBD board meeting at the same, the same day that we have the work session?
I wouldn't try to get it done by the 23rd. I'm saying after we have done this and our, the planning staff has already started to look forward, and I think actually, especially after we actually approved the bike plan, we're going to start doing long-range transportation planning. Some of that is going to be capital planning that relies on TBD funds. At that moment, and maybe six months from now, at that moment, I'd like the TBD to adopt a parallel document that's smaller, but I want it to match.
Okay, so Ted, do you have something to add?
Yeah, I think Michael raises a really good point, and we recognize the timing issues, and ideally we'll get the bicycle master plan approved by council along with the pedestrian master plan and be able to plan out three, four, or five years throughout the remainder of the TBD. That makes a lot of sense, and we agree that the recommendations that staff has provided as part of the draft tip are recommendations only. We actually received very similar comments from the Transportation Commission that said, you know, we like these recommendations, they're the top-rated projects in the draft bicycle master plan, but yet they recognize that the TBD board hadn't seen them yet, and the Transportation Commission actually hadn't had a lot of opportunity to debate them either. What we've done in previous tips is just adopt the non-motorized dollar amount, come back and finalize the projects when the TBD board has an opportunity, so Michael's recommendation works for staff.
Great. Okay, so next time TBD convenes, we can address that item. Any other comments from council before we move on? Okay, so we will hold a work session in two weeks on these items, and that is it for our public hearing on the Transportation Improvement Program. Next up are reports from council standing committee meetings, and we will start with Public Works and Public Safety chaired by Terry Bornammon.
Thank you, Kathy. We had six items before the committee today, but when we get started, we need, we're going to do item three first, and we're going to reverse one and three.
Can I ask you to hold on a second on that? Is that going to work for us? Okay.
It's got to work because that's what we're doing.
Okay. Just heads up for everyone else, our new system makes it a little tricky to rearrange items on the fly when we're taking notes, so...
Well, this was the order we did this morning, and we were stated by legal, this is what we need to do, so...
That's great. We'll make it work.
So just signal when I, when I can go.
Can he move forward?
Oh, okay. Okay, the first item is an ordinance related to the 2014 Fire Department budget for purchase of a, is that the one word I meant? Yeah. Yeah, an ordinance related to the 2014 Fire Department budget for the purchase of a fire rescue boat. The ordinance related to the 2014 Fire Department budget increasing revenues and expenditures related to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security Port Security Grant for the purchase of a fire rescue boat. The committee recommended approval of this ordinance, and I so move.
Beckett.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of this item? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
The second item was an interlocal agreement between the City of Bellingham and the Port of Bellingham to provide co-matching funds for the Bellingham Fire Department's FY 2013 Port Security Grant Program award. In September 2013, the City of Bellingham was awarded $750,000 in federal funding under the FY 2000, fiscal year 2013 Port Security Grant Program. Terms of the grant required $250,000 matching funds from the recipient, the city, for a total program cost of $1 million. The Port of Bellingham has agreed to pay one-half of the required matching funds, $125,000, with the city responsible for the remaining $125,000. Committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Beckett.
Okay, any discussion? Michael?
I'm going to vote in favor of interlocal, but now seems the best time to bring up other issues that have to do with cost-sharing agreements with the port. The letter was forwarded that the port set a couple of months ago where they committed to this matching fund, but one- to this matching fund, but one of the issues that I raised has to do with the ongoing operational costs. Where understanding from the letter is the port is going to provide mortgage for free, basically, and that will be their operational contribution. So I have, I'm not sure that's enough frankly. I don't know what the ongoing operational costs will be, but I'm concerned that it won't be fair cost-sharing particularly because again, the reason behind this boat and this grant had to do with its non-firefighting extra capabilities for the port that were security-related, that are entirely separate from anything having to do with the Fire Department. And I don't think, whatever operations the costs those are, and I don't know what they are, I don't think they should be borne by the port. So I think there's some unanswered questions. And a specific question for Bill, if you don't mind, or Kelly, is I don't know what we did with the old fire bell. Did the port also give us mortgage for free? Was that part of their support before?
Yes, actually, the, in the original agreement with the bell, the port provided the mortgage as far as they provided the space for us down there. We, it was on us for the maintenance and upkeep of the boathouse. We're still working together with them on what the future looks like and they've been more receptive and more cooperative in the concept of not only would they provide the mortgage space, but they have been very receptive to the idea that, that the, some improvements and needed upkeep and that for the boathouse would, could possibly be done by the port for us.
That's encouraging. I just went off of my opinion that I, I, we don't yet have the operational and some of the facilities agreements worked out with the port and given the mission of this boat, I think that needs to be looked at closely and that's not yet been approved or discussed in the future.
Any other comments, Terry?
Oh, just, it has been discussed. This, this isn't the first time this came up. When the purchase of the boat came up, those questions were raised and, and, and at that point, it was stated that it would, that the port was looking at in-kind types of contributions. So they were, this, they were raised previous to, to the boat going forward, you know, and they're still having, working out some of the details, but, but, but that had been raised previous by, by the council when we were, when we were looking at it and, and discussing going out for bids on that.
Yeah. We also wanted to ensure as, as we move forward, in the agreement, it does clearly call out, because the boat will have some new missions as it's part of the port security, not just fire protection. The interlocal with them does call out if the boat is called upon for those additional port security or basically our maritime awareness and for us to be out on the water due to port requirements, that the port will fund those activities. Additionally, the new interlocal does call out if we have them, even on the fire protection side, if we have a major incident that involves prolonging operation of the boat, additional staffing and that requirements and such, that the port, we would be able to bill the port for those specific incidences. So this does provide us much more opportunity to work together with the port financially on that. We were a little leery of, on our normal fire operations, trying to tie port money into our normal fire operational budget for that boat for the pure and simple fact that without tying them to us financially, it also lets us be fully in control of how we operate there. So that was one of the other reasons for not necessarily engaging in cost-sharing for the daily operation of it.
Okay, any further discussion? Anyone, before I go back to Michael? Okay, Michael?
I don't, I don't, I think I read it somewhere, but no, but I don't see it now where, at least in this interlocal agreement, there's anything about reimbursement for those other activities and for fire response. I know I read it somewhere, but I don't see it in the interlocal.
Yeah, it, I believe it vaguely refers to it in the interlocal and then I know I specifically read language in a, it was in an internal port memo that was attached to the interlocal that went through there where their security director advising their board or their commissioners specifically that if it was to be called into service for port security purposes, that they would be funding that issue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Peter?
Yeah, I was just going to say that this, this funding agreement is designed to just be a very short period of time. It goes away after the funds are, are spent and the, the procurement process is completed. I think that there might be some language to that in an MOA that was submitted as part of getting the grant. There may be another place where that's identified, but you're not going to find it here.
Okay, and we have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, the next item is a contract award to Moose Boats, Inc. for agreement to build a fire rescue boat. This is to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Moose Boats, Inc. to build a fire rescue boat procured through the General Services Administration, the GSA Cooperative Purchasing Program Schedule 84, contract number GS-07F-0507, for the amount of $899,553, including Washington State use tax, which will be paid separately by the city at the rate of 8.7% in the sum of $78,261.11. The committee recommended approval and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
The next item was a proposed ordinance amending Chapter 14.02 of the Bellingham Municipal Code Regarding Latecomers Agreement for Street and Utility Systems Improvements. Chapter 14.02 of the Bellingham Municipal Code establishes a uniform methodology and process for the administration of latecomers agreement in circumstances where a developer uses private funds to construct public streets and/or utility system improvements and desires to be partially reimbursed by property owners who subsequently connect to or use the improvements. The Washington State Legislature recently amended the requirements for utility latecomers agreements in several key areas. The proposed ordinance amends Chapter 14.02 of the Bellingham Municipal Code to adopt the new state law requirements and to improve the administration consistency and interpretability of the city's latecomer code provisions. The committee recommended approval and I so move.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, the next item is a bid award for James Street at Abandoned Railroad Bridge Replacement, ER-0009, bid number 5B-2014. The project consists of replacing two existing timber stringer bridges with one single-span concrete bridge structure. The new two-lane structure and roadway approaches will be constructed to arterial standards with bicycle lanes and sidewalks and a one-way parking facility for Sunset Pond Park. The project is located on James Street between Orchard Drive and Sunset Pond Park. A vicinity map is attached. 125 solicitations were viewed and three bids were received. The lowest responsive and responsible bid was for $2,497,941.40, including sales tax, by Ram Construction General Contractors, Inc. The engineer's estimate was for $3,599,291.30, including sales tax. It was explained, one of the reasons for the discrepancy between the engineer's estimate and Ram Construction is there are so few bridge awards of this, this type of bridge. And it was, went in our favor of over $1,100,000, which is always a great thing. The committee recommended approval and I so move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, the last item before us today was a work session on Alabama corridor safety improvements. Constructions of safety improvements on Alabama Street must be defined for federal grant funding purposes with constructions completed by September 30th, 2015. A public hearing was held on Monday, April 7th, 2014 and council conducted a work session on April 21st, 2014. City council directed Public Works to hold an additional meeting with the Roosevelt Neighborhood on Wednesday, May 14th, 2014 to discuss possibilities of constructing East-North Street as a minimum standard local accessway for six blocks between Queen and Undine Street. Staff highlighted what was discussed at the neighborhood meeting and summarized written comments received since the last council work session. Staff was seeking approval from the city council on safety improvements for the corridor. Including, included in this was a alternative to the, to what staff had originally recommended and continues to recommend. We had two motions that came out of us and we had really good discussion. And I want to state, as we move forward with, with this, parts of the consideration of the committee when looking at, at the safety improvements was also looking at not only the safety of driving on Alabama Street, but looking at the safety in the existing neighborhoods. Sometimes we have trade-offs within, we might get a little more safety with C-curbs all the way through on Alabama Street, but by diverting traffic into the existing neighborhoods where you have no sidewalks and others, we could possibly create a greater hazard and safety problems for the existing neighborhood. So our committee was trying to weigh the two safety kinds of, of programs when we were making our decision. And that was one of the reasons, you know, at, at the public hearing, council raised, started raising those issues and one of the reasons we wanted staff to go out and talk to neighbors. So the first motion that was made today, and I'm going to give a little description about what took place, but, but it was a recommendation to lower this, lower the speed limit. There had been talk at first about lowering speed limit to 25 miles an hour, then a motion was made to lower it to 30 by Michael. Jack had asked if that could be changed at this time to just a motion to lower the speed limit so that we would have a discussion with the full council tonight as to if the council wanted to lower the speed limit and if so, to what amount instead of the, and so the recommend, or a motion was made to lower the speed limit and for discussion, I so move on the first part of this.
And then there's a second one?
What?
And then there'll be a second part?
Yes, there will be a second one on that. Then I don't know if we wanted to consider the one first or if I should put them both out right now?
You're good to put them both out.
Okay, the second motion was a, a recommendation approving the staff's alternative proposal. And the committee recommended approval of that unanimously and I so move with that.
Second.
So we have...
What are you seconding?
I'm seconding...
Hold on. So we have two motions in front of us, the first being the recommendation to lower the speed limit and the second being to approve staff's alternative proposal, so...
I'm seconding the second one that, that Terry had stated. And to hold off on the speed limit discussion until after we have this dealt with.
Okay, so I agree. Let's change the order if that's fine.
That's perfectly fine. I just wanted to relate the, the, the order of our discussion today.
Great. Did you have something to add before we...
I want to ask a question before.
Okay.
I'm just curious, before I voted this, I want to make sure that I'm clear. Is, I thought I understood from this morning's presentation that the C-curb was gone except for two small port, portions of it. And then through public comment, there were things about whether or not that is true or not. And Chris, could you state for us publicly what the situation is?
Yeah, Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. So the recommendation or the alternative set of solutions that were put forward this morning is to deal with the C-curb during the, throughout the central portion of the corridor, which is from Pacific Street to Undine. The alternative solutions do not install a C-curb throughout that portion. And probably where some of the confusion may have lied was in the second recommendation that was, was to continue to annually monitor the vehicle collision history on the central portion of Alabama as reported by WashDOT to determine if vehicle collisions have been indirectly reduced as a result of installing the pedestrian improvements throughout that section of the corridor. There was another section that talked about in conjunction with the Bellingham Comprehensive Plan that will be happening in 2016, that staff would work with the neighborhoods to update the neighborhood Roosevelt Plan and identify future transportation needs and possible improvements on Alabama and Wilburn Streets. One of the things that we heard when we went back out to the neighborhood was concerns that we were focusing on Alabama and Alabama alone and that we should be looking at the broader transportation network, which would include Wilburn, which would include parallel routes of Iowa and Barclay Sunset. And so that's one of the things that we're saying we can do as part of the comprehensive planning update. There wasn't any discussion about going back in the future and installing a C-curb. The discussion was seeing whether the improvements that would go forward at this time were effective and what things may need to be done in the future as a result of growth or different traffic patterns, not necessarily or specifically installing a C-curb, but other safety improvements or other capacity projects that may need to be in the future completed at some time.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve staff's alternative proposal with the reduced C-curb. And are there any other questions or discussion, Michael?
Terry used the word trade-offs. It's a pretty good word. Phrase I was going to use as balancing act. I heard tonight, some people in the neighborhood say it's a residential street. I'm sorry, it's not a residential street. I've also heard our staff say it's a secondary arterial. I'm sorry, it's not just a secondary arterial. It's both at the same time. If it was one or just the other, this wouldn't be a difficult solution. It functions both ways and those two ways are to some degree incompatible with each other. So that's why these trade-offs, in my opinion, are necessary. I appreciate that the, the staff still is sticking to their original recommendation on principle, but I'm in favor of the recommended new changes. I, I, I believe that we are equally concerned about traffic on beside streets as we are on Alabama and I'm hoping that we have struck the right balance and made the right trade-offs.
Terry?
Yeah, earlier, as part of my discussion about this trade-off, I also pointed out the discussion that previous councils had had about safety issues within other neighborhoods, where we have actually went the other way, where we have put traffic calming or in Fairhaven, where we blocked off going through in York Street neighborhood, we've actually made it so you can't do pass-through, drive, drive-through within the neighborhood to make those neighborhoods safe, to make those neighborhoods safer because we felt the, you know, passing, you know, going through, cutting across from Lakeway over to Samish was a safety hazard for the residents. Well, that's kind of what we're also looking at here, the concern about diverting traffic within, within those neighborhoods where you have streets with no sidewalks and where now you have a lot of children playing in those areas, so. have a lot of children playing in those areas, so. Those are safety concerns that the committee was considering when we were looking at that as well as the safety concerns for driving through on the Alabama Hill Corridor.
Any further comments before we vote? Roxanne?
I just want to take this time to talk about a quick value that I hope people are starting to experience and understand in relation to this. The city council has not been your enemy in this. Staff's job is to bring forth proposals that are the most cost effective, that directly in their professional opinion, address the issue. That's what they did. And then it's our job to bring this information to the community, to gather your input, listen to your feedback, and move on from there. I hope you're experiencing that that's how it works. It's not that we commit to these things from the beginning and that we're out to get any neighborhood, we're here to work with the neighborhoods. And I hope you'll take this as an introduction to how we work with the community so we can continue to work with you on all the different neighborhood improvements that we always seek to make. So, I appreciate how everybody came out and gave us this input, now I just hope you'll stay engaged. Thank you.
Terry?
Yeah, just pigging back a little bit on what was just said, you want to point out with some of the safety considerations that are in this plan, came about because of a lot of the concerns within the neighborhood. I remember when Charles first, had been coming to meetings for a long time, talking about, we can't get across this damn street and it's not safe. You know, we need, we need lit parking, crossing lanes. And because he was here all the time and because others, that's why we have these things included in here, because we are, staff and council is trying to be responsive to what we're hearing. Unfortunately, it's impossible to meet everybody's needs and at the same time. We have to balance a whole lot of interests and a whole lot of needs and try to come up with the best plan possible and hopefully that's what we're trying to do tonight.
Jack?
I guess I want to take time to thank Public Works for two things. One is understanding what your own recommendation is and holding to it, but also to provide an alternative that where you really did listen, I think, to the neighborhood. And to the neighborhood folks, I guess I want to welcome you to civic involvement, because the Roosevelt neighborhood really has been quiet ever since I've been paying attention to civic politics and this, it's unfortunate that it has to be C curbs, but at the same time, I think, I think you've seen that, you know, that there has been a give and take going on and mostly you have gotten what you've wanted through this, admittedly it's a compromise, but you have. And then the other part of it though is that, you know, just earlier tonight when Chris was showing all of the different improvements, it's not just the improvements along Alabama Street, but it's this comprehensive view of all of the bike Boulevard improvements, the sidewalk improvements, the way that the multimodal shift of the transportation network through the entire neighborhood is being dealt with all at the same time. You're the envy, I think, of every other neighborhood in the city. Nobody's got anything like this. And I'm hoping that it will be a model for other neighborhoods, but this is a really good thing and I hope that you, I mean, I know that some people are somewhat upset or are concerned about what the future, the future holds for the neighborhood, but this is a good thing and I think that, you know, I hope that you party later on tonight for the fact that there was a very good decision that has really accommodated a lot of your comments.
Jean?
I can just echo what's been said, you know, we were told earlier this evening that we needed more public involvement and we need a television channel because our government isn't listening to us. Well, here's a classic example of government was listening, staff did listen, they knew early on the C curb, the whole length was not gonna happen, they took it upon themselves to find a solution, so thanks to staff. And once again, you know, people do listen up here, we just don't sit up here, we listen to everybody and everybody's point of view, and I don't need a television set to do that because I'll turn a channel.
Thanks, Jean. Okay, I guess I'll quickly just add, one cent is, I really enjoyed getting to know a lot more Roosevelt folks through this process and learning more about the Roosevelt neighborhood and a lot of the dynamics of that neighborhood and what it's like to live with this sort of road through the middle of a community. And I appreciated that opportunity and I just wanted to put that out there because it's easy to think we know everything and we don't. And, I mean, our information is really only as good as what we can observe or hear from professionals that the city has hired or hear from people who are experiencing it in their lives. And so, it really is beneficial to us to hear from citizens, so I just want to reiterate that, thanks to the Roosevelt neighborhood that really stepped up and shared their experience of their community with us. It, I think, led to a better product and really helped us make a more wise decision. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve staff's alternative proposal. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Party!
We have a second motion that has yet to receive a second and it is about lowering the speed limit on Alabama without a proposed number attached to it so that we might have a discussion. Is there a second?
I'll second it just for discussion purpose.
Jean seconded and discussion?
Is the, are you talking about the full length Alabama? When you guys talk, I-
That was brought up. That was one of the questions that staff had, based on whatever council's direction is, we would need to have the project limits. Our recommendation would be, well, if I may, our recommendation continues to be that we allow the improvements to be made, allow the traffic to settle into those improvements and then do an engineering evaluation to see what the appropriate speed limit should be. I think we all, staff all believe that these improvements will lower the speed, the effective speed throughout the corridor and that may result in opposing something less than thirty-five, but we would like to do that engineering study. However, if council decides to lower the speed limit without that study, our recommendation would be that you would do it all the way from Cornwall to Electric to the lake and have the whole corridor be the same speed limit.
Jack?
So, I was arguing for twenty-five miles an hour this morning, I provided a number of reasons, including the, you know, right now Alabama really is somewhat of an expressway. It has very few opportunities to slow down or stop. With the improvements associated with this project, it's gonna be every other block and it's gonna be much slower and there's gonna be a lot of busyness that will definitely slow down traffic. And my take in, take on it is that, you know, for what Terry's been saying about the safety issues about, you know, we're trying to do the safest thing possible and trying to weigh the unintended consequences of, say, like the C curb and what the safety issues would be in the, you know, the surrounding neighborhood, I look at the speed limit as being one of the, you know, the major safety issues associated with, you know, with the collision rates and it's particularly the severity of the collisions and especially with pedestrian, you know, pedestrian vehicle accidents where if you get hit at twenty-five miles an hour, your chances of surviving serious injury or death is much greater than it would be, much, much greater than it would be at thirty-five miles an hour. So, as I've been thinking about it, to me it seems like the road diet component between Cornwall and James, that that definitely should be twenty-five, you know, just because that matches a number of other streets that have similar type of layouts as a secondary arterial. And then from, you know, from James Street up to, well, I guess up to Electric, but I was thinking maybe more up towards U Street, but it could go all the way up to Electric, that that would be thirty miles an hour, that would be able to, you know, address, I think, the real legitimate expectations of the fact that there will be slower, you know, the speed, the actual speed limit will be lower anyway. And I think to create an artificially high speed limit of thirty-five, when you have all this other stuff going on, I think that that is a potential conflict in the way that people drive. And we're gonna have, some people will be really cautious and then we're gonna have other people that will be in a hurry or wanting to go in speed and they'll say, well, it's the speed limit, I get to go thirty-five and so I'm going to, regardless of how safe it is. And to me, it just seems like, I would rather err on the safe side than to, and do that right now, than to wait for an engineering study. I would rather do the engineering study afterwards anyway and see whether or not that speed limit is correct, at the lower speed limit. I'd rather change it up than to go and try and change it down, because I, I'm concerned about what types of potential accidents there would be with this, you know, this conflict of having a very high speed limit with all of these other features going on along the road.
Roxanne and then Pinky?
So, I generally feel like traffic calming will occur over time with these safety improvements. At the same time, I have to put on my WTA board member hat, I definitely hear what the community is saying about adding more buses for the three thirty-one, but we have received such good input from WTA that if we were to reduce to twenty-five, that that would slow down the buses so substantially and prevent them from guaranteeing more on time. They said they could live with thirty and I think we go with thirty so we can help WTA, so we can see what the actual situation is over time, and then I just think that's not as extreme, but actually could address and calm the traffic safety even more.
I too want to air a little bit more on safety and I would like to see a reduced speed limit, but I also think that a compromise would be, between safety and WTA at thirty, would be a nice start, and to see how that goes. I drive the Alabama Hill every single day and today I drove it at thirty miles an hour going down the hill to see what that felt like, and every day people are going flying past me and it is always a safety concern, so I would like to see a little reduction in the speed limit there.
Michael?
With regard to the thirty miles an hour, this isn't just a number halfway between twenty-five and thirty-five, there was a feasibility study done and I quote one sentence from that, or two actually. "A technical analysis found that lowering the posted speed limit on Alabama from thirty-five to thirty would not result in appreciably greater travel times from one end of the corridor to the other and would not result in negative impact in WTA transit or typical vehicle traffic. Lowering the posted speed to twenty-five miles per hour however, would require noticeably greater travel time for vehicle traffic and would negatively impact on-time performance in WTA buses on Alabama." So, thirty to me is not just a number halfway between, but it's a number that's been studied, we have some confidence that it may work. With regard to the effective speed limit, I think the speed limit is less important during the busy times, when the hawk signals will be activated, when there's a lot of cars queuing, traffic will naturally slow, whenever streets get full, sometimes they come to a stop unfortunately, but busyness brings the speed limit down naturally. The thirty mile an hour speed limit, I think, is more important during the less busy times, eleven o'clock at night, you know, that's when someone's gonna try to go forty-five, fifty down Alabama, or over on the far west end, that's where they're gonna goose up to thirty-six, thirty-eight, you know, go on, you know, past Colson Street or something like that. So, the speed limit, I think, is very important for protection around the clock. And that's why I'm also in favor of erring on the safe side, putting the speed limit now. We can always increase it if it turns otherwise, but I really don't think we will.
Terry?
Yeah, I was originally for going along with staff's recommendation, you know, of keeping it at thirty-five because I think all the traffic calming is going to naturally slow it down most, most of the times. Thirty, I could live with because of the, you know, WTA said that that, they could, and that has to be a consideration because this council has, you know, part of our values have been to try to get people out of the single occupancy car and trying to make those systems work. And that's, that's part, that's part of our decision, you know, for people out there, the elements that we have to consider in making our decision is complex and we have to consider all of those, those different items. I could live with thirty, twenty-five, I think is too, is, at this point, too much, but, you know, I would change, you know, if it's the will of the council, I can go along with the thirty.
I think thirty's a wise decision too, you know, I've been driving that road for thirty-nine years and one of the things I look forward to when that road diet is built between James and Cornwall is no longer getting zigzagged into oblivion by people who decide they want to ride the right rail until they decide to get in the left rail. And that just drives me nuts, I give the three fingered salute, my wife just yells and screams at me and I'm glad I won't have to do that anymore, but I think, I think that's gonna be the biggest thing that happens. It will slow traffic down, but I think sending it down just another notch is a good idea because, I tell you, I go to work at six-thirty in the morning and it is just zoom, 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 all the way down there and it has to change. I saw a horrible wreck today that really brought this to me because I was on East Chestnut and North Forest. And an SUV came down there with three little girls in the back of it and absolutely T-boned this lady in a white car and flipped her around about six times. People are just going too fast and she also ran a red light. I was the second car behind. If I'd have been, if I'd have been one car up, I'd have got T-boned. And I'll tell you what, people, if you're watching, slow down, you've got to slow down.
Michael?
I'd like to move to amend the motion to specify thirty miles an hour as a speed limit to be reduced to-
Second, from where to where?
Okay.
No.
What did I say?
He wants to move to amend the motion to lower the speed limit to thirty miles per hour.
From where to where?
From thirty-five down to thirty, is what I meant to say.
Down to thirty.
Didn't I say that?
From Cornwall to-
And Jean seconded. I have two questions.
The entire length of the road, yes.
The, okay, the entire length of the, recommended lowering the speed limit to thirty from thirty-five, the entire length of Alabama, from Cornwall to Electric.
From Cornwall to Electric.
Oh, really?
It doesn't sound very loud tonight.
Yeah, it doesn't. Electric. I'll reiterate it again.
Fair enough, yeah.
Then we'll get the world again?
I have two, two questions.
There you go.
And Jean seconded that, that's louder.
Now we're loud.
Ooh-hoo, now we're cooking. First question is about, sorry, I just want to write these down before I lose it. What was it? Okay, I just want to make sure we're not, I thought, hate to be Debbie Downer, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought that we can't arbitrarily lower speed limits and expect a change and so we're not really doing that, we're making a change to the street and we expect that it will slow some traffic speeds and so, we're not really hoping to artificially force the traffic to be lower, but to make the speed reflect what we hope is going to happen, I guess. I guess I just want to be cautious that we, first of all, is this realistic? And secondly, if it's not based in reality, what happens if we start changing the speed, you know, we put it at thirty and then you guys do a study and we get results after a year and we drop it to twenty-five or we bump it back to thirty-five and implement something else? I don't know, sorry, it's been a long day. My question is, in your opinion, is- My question is, in your opinion, is this based in reality if we set the speed limit at 30?
Well, I think that's why we would prefer to do an engineering study, but I believe that the discussion that the council is having is essentially what we would be looking at is, are the improvements that, that are made, do they change the characteristics of the corridor enough that the effective speed would be lowered and you wouldn't be artificially lowering the speed limit? We would prefer, and our recommendation remains, to, to do an engineering analysis to, to make sure that that is the case, that the changes to the corridor do make it feel as though you should drive slower. Your first point was, it is challenging.
Did you catch it?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. It is challenging to, to just change the posted speed limit without changing the characteristics of the street. Alabama street was designed to have a 35 mile an hour speed limit. And so, it's, it's very straight, I mean, it feels comfortable, it's wide enough for people that they feel comfortable going. A little over the 85th percentile is about 37 miles an hour, which means it's posted correctly at 35, that's what should be posted. It should be posted at 35 based on how people are driving it. The average speed is slightly below 35 right now. That's always a concern, to just arbitrarily change the speed limit. What I'm hearing from the discussion that council is having is that, that's not your intent, your intent is to have the speed limit reflect the corridor's effective speed based on the changes. All we're suggesting is let's have a engineering study take place that would eliminate any speculation and, and you could look back at staff's recommendation and say that, yeah, that, we agree with that or we don't. Setting speed limits is entirely within the council's purview, you don't need to have an engineering report to do that. I need to have an engineering report to do that, but you don't, so.
Yeah, I guess I, and I respect that. I guess I just want to remind us, or, you know, that clearly if we could just lower the speed limit, we would have done that and so this is not to achieve and, and it's to reflect what we hope the reality is going to become from our changes.
Yeah, I think my final point, and I apologize Terry, the final point is, you don't want to rely entirely on enforcement. That, that is going to result in a lot of frustration for people, including your police department, if you know that if people are going to drive 35 unless they have a fear of getting a ticket and then they're going to drive slow, they're going to get tickets, then they're going to drive fast. If, if it's too low for the conditions, that's the, what you get. The other concern that we have from a more technical perspective is, if it's posted 30, WTA's going to drive 30, sanitary services is going to drive 30. Some people will drive 30, they'll drive the posted, but if everyone else is driving 35 or 40, that conflict in speed is less safe than having everybody drive at the same speed.
Yeah, I guess I'm just a little anxious about, our desires are pure, I'm just, you know, I'm a little anxious about if we'll get the result we hope. Did anyone else want to say anything? I guess it's not a substantial reduction, so I, I am quite happy to try this.
I got one more question relating, relating to that, it didn't come up on, when we made our first motion, is that, just because we moved to make the, recommend the changes to the Alabama Hill corridor, WashDOT has to approve them, have to approve our changes for them to issue the grant. That's not necessarily a given, but since we made the one motion, in your estimation, do you think if we lower the speed limit to 30, would that help with that in terms of looking at it being a greater safety issue or?
You know, I think that's a fair question, I don't know that I have an answer for that. We have, we have tried to get some insight from the DOT as to what they would accept as we became, as it became clearer that our preferred alternative may not be what we send down to WashDOT. And they have really not wanted to speculate or, or give us an opinion based on hypotheticals. I, I don't know. I, I really don't, I hate to speak on WashDOT's behalf.
Jack, and then we'll vote.
So, you know, I appreciate you saying about the buses and sanitary service needing to go 30 if we change it to 30. And the other thing that I think about is just the reaction time to all of these new devices that we're going to be putting on Alabama that, you know, you hit the button and then all of a sudden, there's something that happens there and the reaction time, I think, is very critical for, for people to, to be able to stop, especially now we're, we're introducing these red light hawks where you really do have to stop. And it's, I, I think the slower that we, we create the street in a slower speed limit, I think we're going to achieve the safety goals that we're looking for.
Okay. I'm going to reiterate the motion that has been seconded and it is to lower the speed limit from 35 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour on the length of Alabama from Cornwall to electric.
Point of order?
Yes.
We actually need a vote on the amendment to add the number and then the main motion. Two quick votes in succession.
Okay. That's a good point. Can I have a motion to add the 30?
You already have it, that's what I made.
Well, yours is everything.
I made both the main motion and the amendment.
Okay, great. Okay, we're going to vote on the motion to lower the speed limit from 35 to 30. All those, and there's been a second? Because.
Second if there hasn't been.
I did.
You seconded the main.
Jean seconded.
Motion, okay. So I'm going to split them into two. Michael made the motion and Jean seconded and that's going to stand for the first part, which is a recommendation to lower the speed limit from 35 to 30. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passed 7-0. And then, the subsequent motion is, now that we've selected 30, to lower the speed limit to 30 miles per hour on the length of Alabama from Cornwall to electric. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motions pass 7-0.
All right, false to law.
Not always pretty, is it?
That wasn't even the hard issue of the day.
Yeah, wow, okay, well, how are we doing over there Linda?
Drive safely on your way home.
Can we take a break? Yes. Yeah, we're going to take a five minute break, so we'll reconvene at 9:45.[1060.33]
Excuse me. We'll call this meeting back to order and we'll pick up where we left off.
Has it ever been an order?
Let the jokes begin. What time is it, 9:45?
Yes, let's go.
Okay, we're gonna move into a report from the Planning Committee with Jack White as Chair.
Thank you Kathy. This morning, we had one item. It was a work session, a continuing work session on a draft ordinance to establish a rental registration program, or residential rental safety program. We had presentations by Peter Raffato and Mark Gardner. Peter discussed some changes that the committee, the Planning Committee, had requested of the base ordinance that the mayor had put forward in April. And he presented all of those changes and we had a discussion about that. Mark presented another option that I had requested that he present to the committee. It's informally called Option 5. And we had a brief discussion about that. To summarize what we ended up doing after that was we came up with three different motions to present three different alternatives to the full council through the Committee of the Whole. The first one was the base ordinance that the mayor has put forward. We had another set of small minor changes that the committee approved. It requested that we would change the base ordinance. And then, another motion for a different version of that base ordinance had to do with registration only, with a code enforcement officer and some education facets to that approach. So that was gonna be brought forward as some amendments, some changes to that base ordinance and provide it as an alternative. Another alternative was that Option 5. And that was, the summary of that, that was for a base, that had to do with having a building inspector and an office assistant hired and to do audit inspections. So the first one has to do with one-half of 1% audit inspections. The registration only has no audit inspections. And then the third option, which is this Option 5, has to do with having an employee that would be a building inspector that would do complaint inspections and then do audit inspections, but an unknown number. And just based on the amount of time that they would have after complaint inspections were done. So those three were moving forward to the Committee of the Whole. We had talked about having that at our next council meeting on June 23rd. But then I remembered afterwards that Gene said that he would not be in town on that date. And with the committee's permission, if we could recommend that we would send this to the Committee of the Whole on the next meeting, which is July 7th. Okay, so again, nods from the committee members. So we would like to present our three recommendations to the Committee of the Whole on the afternoon of July 7th. So that's in essence what we had. The other thing, just a quick aside, just because it was reported in the newspaper today of what happened in our meeting, is that a couple of us got in a little bit of a disagreement, a little bit of a spat. And I got a little visceral by the comments that were made. And I want to be able to explain that further to the council. And I'll do that through an email later on. It's not appropriate to do it here, but I would like to be able to explain what happened. And I would like to just say that there's more to the story than what you would read in the paper tomorrow, or that what's online right now. So with that, end of committee.
End of committee, Michael. You don't know what end of committee means?
I tried.
So has the committee brought forward?
Is your mic on?
Thank you. There were three recommendations from the committee, but the committee is requesting that they're not taken up by Committee of the Whole until July 7th.
That's correct.
Whatever we deem to do with them.
Right, and what will happen is that the staff will prepare the three different options for us so we'll have the necessary paperwork to review all three of those options in a pretty systematic order. And that we can choose to accept one for a public hearing, or more than one for a public hearing, or none, if we choose not to go anywhere, so.
So is the recommendation actually to ask staff to prepare information about all three proposals for us to look at on July 7th?
That's what the committee asked the staff to do this morning.
Okay, so I'm a little confused, but, Michael?
Just to clarify, please tell me if I'm wrong on this. Each of those three options came forward with mixed recommendations. None of the three were unanimous, which is why the three are being brought forward to be considered simultaneously.
Well, actually, the second and the third option that I talked about, they were mixed recommendations. The underlying ordinance was the unanimous recommendation to bring that one forward.
Okay. What is the will of the council?
Well, it was just for information that we were going to bring that forward to you on...
Do you want to report it out again on the 7th?
It would be an agenda bill on the 7th for the Committee of the Whole.
Yeah, but don't we have to take your recommendation and then decide to do something with it?
That would be at that time.
Wouldn't the decision point to be do a public hearing? If that's what the council chose to do?
Yeah.
About whatever the option is that you guys want to go forward?
I'm just saying, my point is, and sorry it's late and I'm not my best ever. You've now made three recommendations to us under the umbrella recommendation of having them all presented to us a month from now with staff reports. And we have to agree that that's what we would like to happen for Committee of the Whole?
Yeah, I guess if you want, sure.
To accept that recommendation?
Sure.
And so entertain a motion to that effect.
Well, I'll so move as committee chair.
Great, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second to refer all three of these recommendations from committee to a committee of the whole work session, I guess, on July 7th, and ask staff to prepare information about them for that work session. Any further discussion? Is that clear enough? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Jack.
Sure.
Anything else on this item before?
Just a point of clarification, so as it stands right now, the information that's going to be prepared is simply trimming up three different ordinances essentially. So I just want the council to be clear on what they're gonna get.
Okay.
At least from legal. And, you know, it's gonna be taking large sections out of the base ordinance for the registration only, maybe some slight tweaking on the base ordinance for Option 5. So I just want to be clear on what they're gonna get from legal as it stands now.
Thank you. I think that's amenable to everybody, okay? That's great. End of committee?
End of committee.
Great, thank you, Jack. Okay, next up is Finance and Personnel with Michael Liliquist, Chair.
Thank you Kathy. This morning, or afternoon actually, we had only one agenda item before us. It's an ordinance establishing a biennial budget for the city of Bellingham beginning January 1st of 2015, the 2015-2016 biennial budget. We've been operating on a quasi-biennial budget now for almost two years, but it's been not official. To make it official, state law requires we actually adopt an ordinance to do so. So the 2013-2014 adopted budget and corresponding spending plan was implemented on a trial basis in preparation for adopting a city of Bellingham biennial budget beginning January 2015. The mayor and the staff were pleased with the lengthening of the planning horizon and the time saved implementing the 2014 spending plan. The attached ordinance authorizes the adoption of a two-year biennial budget for the city of Bellingham beginning January 1st, 2015. This afternoon, the committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of this ordinance, and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance to move to biennial budgeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
End of committee report.
Thank you, Michael. Next up is Lake Wacom Reservoir and Natural Resources Committee with Pinky Vargas, Chair.
Thank you Kathy. We had one item today. It was just a report out from the May 12th and June 2nd Lake Wacom Policy Group meeting. In interest of time, I'm gonna be very brief, tell you that we talked about capital investment. Currently, we are spending about $743,000 per year. Those funds come from the city of Bellingham, Wacom County, and state and federal grants. And we are looking at what it's gonna take to improve phosphorus reduction and our TMDL levels for the upcoming years. And we also discussed, and so mostly that was, the discussion was funding. On May 12th and on June 2nd, we had a presentation by Southern Valley who gave us all of their capital investment, sorry, and all of their potential stormwater mitigation and all of the improvements they could do to reduce phosphorus levels. And we have currently no way to fund that, and we were talking about how we would actually do the funding for that. And we all agreed to look for funding, and also the county discussed that currently we have prioritized stormwater project list, and the Southern Valley projects are not on that list currently because they have no feasibility. And again, how we would fund the feasibility study for that. We also ended that one on discussing how we're gonna look at the 2015-2019 work plan. And we've decided to have a special meeting on June 30th at 1:30 PM in the Garden Room to discuss the TMDL timeline and the structure for a 25-year or a 50-year timeline and what the budget would be to make the reductions we need to make, whether done in 25 or 50 years. And that's the end of committee.
Great, thank you very much. Next up is Parks and Recreation with Roxanne Murphy, Chair.
I will strive to be as brief as possible also, but we had two very exciting items, the first of which was Wacom Creek Bridge replacement bid. So the Wacom Creek Bridge was very badly damaged by a fire. We have funding to replace the bridge. This is very exciting because this is a good connection between the neighborhoods and downtown. So if council does go forward with this, construction would begin in July and it would end in 2014. Staff is recommending that we go with FABR construction to the tune of $338,000. And this was approved by the committee, and I move that we award the bid for the replacement of the Wacom Creek Bridge to FABR construction.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
So the second item was the Cordada Neighborhood Park Phase 3 Meadow Loop Trail. Again, the city has funding to really improve the Cordada Neighborhood Park. And most importantly, it would create a loop trail, an installation of parks and park benches and tables. So again, this was something that could be done through existing funding and would go to FABR construction to the tune of $347,000. This was recommended by the committee, and I move that we award the bid for the Cordada Neighborhood Park Phase 3 to FABR construction.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
End of committee.
Thank you very much. Okay, Committee of the Whole report out, we had a number of items this afternoon, the first of which was a very sobering presentation about National Child Abuse Prevention Month and Internet Crimes Against Children. We had Captain Mike Edwards up from the Seattle PD, which is, houses the Internet Crimes Against Children Unit for the state of Washington. And also heard from Bellingham Police Department Detective Pauline Renick about local efforts that we're undertaking to proactively address this problem. I think the things that stuck with me is that this is a large-scale problem on a state, a national, and an international scale, but also does exist in our own community. And Detective Renick cited a couple of instances that are coming up that we'll be taking action in our own community on suspected internet crimes against children. The other thing that stuck with me is it's typically children younger than we would maybe instinctively think about that are targeted as victims, as young as six, seven, and eight years old. And the recommendations were that we be very vigilant and monitor our children's activity online and get as informed as possible about what we can do as parents and community members to intervene in what is really a whole new world of the internet age. And I guess with that, I'll move on to the next item. Unless there's anything anyone wants to add. I was really happy that Chief Cook was here and mentioned that he is really committed to being proactive about this issue. He's awesome. We had then a presentation by Communitywise Bellingham on rail traffic through Bellingham. They were presenting findings about the recently released state rail plan update that essentially validates our previous actions and provides some additional insight into the Bellingham siding issue. Noting that we still have yet to hear from SSA of how they plan to deliver 18 trains per day through Bellingham. At current infrastructure capacity levels, we're only capable of bringing 14 trains through Bellingham per day, probably more like 12. And the projected increase is 18 additional trains, so clearly, there's a disconnect there. In the past, we've sent a letter to the county asking them to act in their official capacity, to inquire with SSA as part of the permitting process what the solution is to this problem so that EIS and other permitting processes can move forward with all the information. And as I said earlier, we don't have an answer to that yet, and so we did decide, we voted 6-0 with one abstention this afternoon to recommend to ourselves that we send another letter, or ask the administration to send another letter. I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to start asking for our staff to tell us exactly what our motions were. We asked 6-0 to ask the administration, working with Michael on our behalf, coordinating our comments, to get into a letter, reiterating our concerns, and addressing additional items, I think for purposes to keep Linda sane. I'm gonna reword that. Okay. Okay. The motion is, we ask the administration to draft a letter in coordination with Michael Liliquist detailing our ongoing concerns about the railroad siding issue in the city of Bellingham. Period. Thank you. Anyone else? It's hot in here?
And I'll second it.
Okay. Terry just seconded. I moved it. Okay, and just to clarify, this afternoon, we had a 6-0 with one abstention recommendation because Michael was cited in the motion as helping move it along. So he refrained from voting to help himself move it along. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, wow, letter passes 6-0. Did you vote on that one, Michael?
Yep, he did.
7-0.
Of course.
It's okay.
You gotta vote for yourself. Some self-promotion, Michael.
Okay, I'm gonna get, we're almost there, I can do this. Okay, next item was information only. And it was a presentation of the city's community and citywide performance measures for 2013. We looked at some of our ongoing metrics that we measure. So we do maintain a database of 85 metrics that help measure how well we as a city and as a community are doing towards achieving our long-range goals. And we got an update on that from Nicole Oliver from IT. And anything else anyone wants to add about that? I had to step out for a moment. Okay. It was a great presentation, check it out. I think I told her it was scintillating, as always. Okay, next item, only three more. A memorandum of understanding between the city of Bellingham and the Public Development Authority. We had a 7-0 recommendation to proceed with the memorandum of understanding with the Bellingham Public Development Authority. And so the language of the motion was to authorize the mayor to execute the MOU as attached in the agenda bill, and it was a 7-0 recommendation, and I so move. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes 7-0. Next item was about public access television. We received a presentation from Janice Keller in the mayor's office about an updated proposal for how we can move forward with some limited P-channel planning on our existing BTB 10 channel. After the presentation, we recommended to do so. 6-1 with Michael Liliquist in opposition, and the motion was to direct staff to work with Jack and Gene of the PEG Working Group, to take necessary steps to designate BTV 10 as a limited P-channel on a trial basis, and to prepare a budget ordinance amending the 2014 budget. to prepare a budget ordinance amending the 2014 budget to fund proposed community-based television programs and services. And I so move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Jack?
Just to clarify for people that are watching, the P stands for public.
Thank you.
Public access.
Yes, P for public access. Should be a grand adventure.
Yes.
Pinky.
I do have a quick question. I'm unclear. I didn't realize we were saying we are approving going forward with this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That we are just approving more information and a work process to look at this concept, but we are not approving right now a PEG station run by.
Yeah, actually, thank you.
We're just discussing.
That's excellent. I wrote the amendment on the original, but the language had changed. So, I'm gonna reread this, Linda, for you. Good catch, Pinky. My contact is falling out of my eye, so I really have one working eye right now. That's a really good point, Pinky. So, the motion, the actual motion was to direct staff to work with Jack and Jean to bring back to council the recommended steps to designate BTB-10 as a limited P for public access channel on a trial basis and to prepare a budget ordinance amending the 2014 budget to fund proposed community-based television programs and services. So, it's essentially the motion that was in the packet, but we added to work with Jack and Jean from the PEG Working Group. And we clarified, instead of to take necessary steps, we clarified to say to bring back to council the recommended steps. Michael?
I'm voting no because I believe the better way to advance public access TV is with a standalone P or maybe even PE, but probably P station or standalone P and standalone E station. So, it's not a vote against public access. I think that having the city run that in-house is not the best way to go.
Thank you. And I should clarify, we did have a little dialogue and head nodding about the fact that Jack and Jean as part of the PEG Work Group understand that we want this trial basis to be as short as possible so that the P can move forward into its own destiny. Yes, Jean?
One last question. Where did, nobody said consultants, did they? I'm asleep now, but I wasn't asleep this afternoon.
I didn't hear that.
It's contractors.
Yeah, we talked about making it available to community contractors, which could include people that have already submitted a proposal or anybody. We weren't talking about contractors running this. And I think that was a misperception on somebody's part that we were talking about contractors.
No, no, consultants. We weren't talking about consultants. We were talking about community contractors.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay. No, you can't, 'cause the final item was pretty.
Do we need to vote on that?
Oh, yes. Okay, we have a motion, was there a second to this motion? And who was it? And it was Jean. Okay, and we're all on the same page. I just joined you there. And so, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes six one with Lillquist in opposition. Thanks, folks, for helping me stay on task. The final item of, on our agenda here for committee, the whole, was a work session on repealing the BNO tax exemption for nonprofit religious health care providers. Page one seventy-two in our packet.
And just to note that this afternoon, you directed staff to add that the ordinance will take effect January first, 2015. And Brian Henshaw has done that. It's the ordinance that will go forward is exactly like what's in the packet, except that there's a section three added that says this ordinance shall take effect January one, 2015.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we had a work session this afternoon on this item following an excellent, I think, public hearing we had a couple of weeks ago. And the committee recommended four to three. Option one, or option A, more accurately referred to in the packet, that the ordinance of the City of Bellingham, Washington, repealing the business and occupation tax exemption for nonprofit religious health care providers and adopting certain health care-specific deductions and exemptions contained in the Washington State Business and Occupation Tax Code effective January first. This was recommended four to three this afternoon. And I guess I can.
I so move.
Okay, thanks, Terry.
I'll make it easier for you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, earlier today, I referenced an article about the increase in revenues under the new Affordable Health Care Act. And I just wanted to quote from this. This is from the Seattle Local Health Guide, which is, oh, no, where did I, did I lose that? Oh, no. I just lost, I lost the page on here. But it references Harborview Hospital in Seattle. And where was it? At Harborview Medical Center, uninsured patients fell from twelve percent to an unprecedented low of two percent this spring. A drop expected to boost Harborview's medical center's revenue by twenty million dollars this year. The share of uninsured patients was cut roughly in half this year at two other major safety net hospitals, Denver Health in Colorado and the University of Arkansas Medical Science Hospitals. And the article goes on to talk about how quickly things are changing because of the affordable health care. So, when I was looking at bringing this forward, the timing probably couldn't be better because St. Joe's is affected the same way. They will have, they have dealt with a lot of uninsured people, but a lot of those people now are covered under the new Affordable Health Care Act, which will boost and which is, not will, is boosting their revenues. And so, I bring this up, you know, because that wasn't brought up during the hearing and testimony. And so, I just wanted to add that to the information that I had raised in my arguments this afternoon. So, I will support that motion, of course.
Any other comments before we vote?
Just a quick comment. We had a really great discussion today and just want to reiterate that this was probably the toughest vote that I've had to make so far. And it was a really good education and that I took it very seriously. And I solicited input from other businesses and from other health care providers before I made this decision. And it was a tough one. But anyway, I just want to explain that.
Thanks, Pinky. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated in the record, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. Can I see a show of hands, just to be sure? All those opposed? Okay, thank you. So, the motion passes four, three with Knutson, Lehman and Murphy in opposition. Okay. We have one set of minutes to approve from May nineteenth.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Oh, I'm sorry.
Main motion and second.
Did you make the motion? Okay, old or new business? New items or old items to bring forward? Need a vote, Jack?
The one that we didn't talk about this afternoon, it was a request of the mayor to see what the update is on the pipeline ordinance that we brought forward about two and a half years ago or so. And the work, I believe, is done. It's just when will that be actually brought forward to the council? I'm looking at what we did this afternoon as far as the presentation with the coal trains and I'm just looking at some of the other fossil fuel issues that we have in the county.
I think I had stepped out of the room when you had that conversation, so let me follow up. I had stepped out of the room and I had come back in for the subsequent conversation about, so why don't you explain that to, I wasn't in the room at the time you made that request.
We didn't talk about this particular issue. It's just because it's a fossil fuel-related issue. The council had directed our staff to work on a pipeline safety ordinance that was establishing different buffers for any construction that would be associated with existing pipelines that we have. And.
I'm afraid we're having trouble recalling that. Can you tell us what it is that you wanted? Because so far, I've looked at two staff members and they're looking confused, just like I am.
Okay, so Mark Gardner started working on this with the Planning Department. And the Planning Department has taken it and has created an ordinance on modifying this. It was, there was a grant from the Pipeline Safety Trust. That helped with the work on this. And I'm just wanting to get like a status report of where it is and when would it actually come back to the council.
Okay, I'll send it to you via email.
Thank you.
Okay, any other old or new business? Seeing none. I'm going to report out from executive session this afternoon. We had four items, but an item was added in the morning, so I'm gonna report out on all five items. Number one was potential litigation. So, during the Public Works Public Safety Committee meeting, staff provided the committee with information on a potential litigation matter. Information given, no action taken. The second was potential property acquisition. Staff provided information on a potential property acquisition. And so, I haven't done this before or done it right, if I've done it. I have an action that we're recommending. Okay, so I'm gonna read the action and then say I'll entertain a motion?
Yeah, you can just entertain the motion that's specified in that item as written.
Okay. Oh, I see. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to authorize the purchase of four point four or five acres in the Lake Wacom watershed from Trillium Corporation for thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars with an anticipated closing date of June seventeenth, 2014.
I so move. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Okay, our third item in executive session was potential property acquisition. Staff provided information on a potential property acquisition. And I will entertain a motion to authorize the purchase of seven point six acres in the Lake Wacom watershed from the Mullin Family Trust for two hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars with an anticipated closing date of June thirtieth, 2014.
I so move.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. We had a fourth item today, which was potential property acquisition. Staff provided information on a potential property acquisition. And I will entertain a motion to authorize the purchase of real property located at thirty-seven hundred James Street from Ronald N. Smith for two hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred dollars with an anticipated closing date of June twenty-third, 2014.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. And our fifth item today was potential litigation. Staff provided counsel with information on a potential litigation matter. Information was given, no action was taken. Mayor's report.
There are two new appointments to the Museum Foundation Board, George Alvarez and Elizabeth Stewart. The issue of fireworks came up. The ban takes effect June eighteenth. As the public may remember, all fireworks are prohibited in the city for this year's Independence Day celebrations. We've initiated our efforts to remind, I guess, remind the community members about that, including a guest editorial by Police and Fire that was in the newspaper. And it's on, that was June ninth, and it's on the city's website and Facebook pages. And the Police and Fire are planning additional education and enforcement activities beginning June twenty-eighth through July fifth. And if you want more specifics about that, I can have them send you a list if you're interested in what those might be.
Roxanne?
Yeah, yeah. Can we also get a list of great places to watch the show, to encourage people to go to the show, to celebrate?
You can come to my backyard, but it doesn't hold that many people. But you're all invited. Yeah, I think we can publicize something like that, too.
We're all coming to Kelly's?
That if needed, and it said I didn't. Okay, there is a lapse of memory on this side of the rostrum also.
Oh, good, I don't feel so bad.
Peter, when it doesn't say here, sometimes I miss it. I need you to approve those two appointments.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Pinky got second.
This is for George Alvarez and Elizabeth Stewart to the Museum Foundation Board. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
And I have one more thing to announce, and that is that the city has partnered with the Bellingham Wacom Tourism to open a new storefront in the Parkade.
Yay.
Really happy. They're paying into the parking fund, nobody worry. And I'm really excited about that, 'cause I think if we do the Parkade perk up and as we start looking at downtown, I think it's helpful to have that entity there. And they're also co-locating with the Downtown Bellingham partnership. So, I think that's a really good thing. And we mentioned earlier today that this is John Stark's last day, and I just wanted to say it one more time, he did a great job. Other than that, end of mayor's report.
Thank you, Mayor Kelly. Okay, final item, consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Well, not final item, second to final item. Final item that I have to try and wrangle. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda passes seven zero. Now, final item is final consideration of ordinances.
Agenda Bill two zero four two two, an ordinance of the City of Bellingham authorizing the acquisition of six ambulances and execution of a finance contract and related documentation relating to the acquisition of said ambulances.
Move third and final.
Michael Lillquist?
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
Jack Weiss?
No.
Terry Borneman?
Aye.
Jean Knutson?
Aye.
Kathy Lehman?
Aye.
Ordinance passes six one. Agenda Bill two zero four one nine, an ordinance of the City of Bellingham, Washington. Agenda Bill 20419, an ordinance of the city of Bellingham, Washington, amending Bellingham Municipal Code 15.12 to adopt requirements for mandatory sewer service connections.
Move third and final.
Second.
Who was the second?
I was. I know, a rarity.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
Jack Weiss?
Aye.
Terry Borneman?
Aye.
Jean Knutson?
Aye.
Kathy Lehman?
Aye.
Michael Lillquist?
Aye.
Ordinance passes 7-0. Agenda Bill 20427, an ordinance amending Bellingham Municipal Code BMC Chapter 17.10 to adopt by reference the 2014 edition of the National Electrical Code and to make other minor amendments to BMC Chapter 17.10.
Move third and final.
Second.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
Jack Weiss?
Aye.
Terry Borneman?
Aye.
Jean Knutson?
Yes.
Kathy Lehman?
Aye.
Michael Lillquist?
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy?
Yes.
Ordinance passes 7-0. Agenda Bill 20420, an ordinance adding a new classification to the E-Team Salary Plan and amending the 2014 budget by reclassifying one position in the Information Technology Services Department General Fund where no appropriation or reallocation of funds is requested to provide for the additional cost.
Move third and final.
Second.
Jack Weiss?
Aye.
Terry Borneman?
Aye.
Jean Knutson?
Aye.
Kathy Lehman?
Aye.
Michael Lillquist?
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
Ordinance passes 7-0.
And we are adjourned.